Exciting one with a lot of great projects, a lot of great funding, and a lot of great remediation that's been able to take place in our community. So I just wanted to mention that. It might actually say that I didn't get to read the proclamation yet. So we'll get there. But yeah, really amazing. And Lisa started at the Watershed Council back in 1999, I believe. So I'll read the proclamation and whatever else we want to say after that, we can do that. So whereas the Truckee River Watershed Council, established in 1996 to bring the community together to protect, enhance, and restore the Truckee River watershed, has become a leading environmental restoration organization in the region and across the state. And whereas Lisa Wallace, hired as the Watershed Council's first employee in 2001, has served as the executive director for the past 21 years, grounding its work in science and building on the successes of her predecessors by continuing Truckee River Day, the coordinated watershed management strategy, and attention to the Truckee River Operating Agreement. And whereas, under Lisa's leadership, the Watershed Council completed its first large-scale restoration, the Davies Merrill Creek Project in 2003, followed by more than 50 other projects, including Porazo Meadows, Martis Wildlife, and Coldstream Canyon Restorations. And whereas Lisa built partnerships with public agencies, community organizations, and individuals, positioning the Watershed Council as a leader addressing watershed challenges through efforts like the Truckee River Basin Water Group and the Middle Truckee River Watershed Forest Partnership. And whereas Lisa's dedication to the Watershed Council's mission has earned numerous accolades, including the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency Spirit Award, U.S. Forest Service Rise to the Future Partnership Award, Town of Truckee Gratitude Award, and Office Boss, Best Boss of Truckee Tahoe. What a wide variety of awesome awards. And I'm sure there's more. Whereas Lisa leaves the Watershed Council well-prepared to complete 50 large-scale projects in the next 10 years to ensure clean water, thriving wildlife, and resilient ecosystems amid climate change and development. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor of the town of Truckee, congratulations to Lisa on her retirement, and best wishes for your continued success, health, and happiness. Please say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, and all the council members, and so many of the staff who are here that I've had the opportunity to work with for so many years. I asked Michelle, you can come on up. I asked Michelle just to step up here with me because I'm really gratified that the Watershed Council has hired its next executive director, who will be Michelle. And many of you, if not all of you, know Michelle. I think we're both feeling really happy about this transition. You know, it's not lost on me that the speaker who was here, I think it was Joe Smith, the speaker who was just here, was talking about the press and the urgency that many of us are feeling about the impacts of climate change. And it's been a great gift for me, a great gift, that for 20 years, the team that I've worked with, the funders, the landowners, many, many, many donors, volunteers, and partners, we've been able to implement local solutions to some of these global dynamics that are impacting us here. And maybe the one thing that's most present for me as I'm in the midst of this transition is a lot of, yeah, just so much gratitude, so much gratitude for being able to do that work and leave that as part of the runway, part of the springboard, whatever metaphor we want to use, for the people coming after us. And to say that locally, we have an amazing community here in Truckee, North Shore, and a little bit further north, you know, up towards Siraville, of people who are deeply committed to implementing on-the-ground solutions here, to help us while we're here right now, but also to help the future. And again, I have so much gratitude and so much joy and enormous confidence in the work that all of you, and Michelle and her team, will carry forward. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right, now we're going to do another retirement. Terry Tachenko, please come on up, along with Mr. Wilkins. Brett Albert's going to come up. Anybody else from Public Works? I think you can all just, you guys can all just come up. Most of the fleet staff. So Terry's been with the town since before incorporation, 31 years, longest-serving town of Truckee employee. And I'm going to let the folks who work with him speak before we give the formal proclamation and a special gift to you as well.
Thank you very much.
Dan.
Hey, Terry. Yeah, yeah. So Terry, I first met Terry 27 years ago when I joined the town, and he had already been working here for about five years at that point. He's in our mechanic shop. A couple of things about Terry, very dedicated. He's one of the reasons we built the dorms that we have above our current maintenance facility, because Terry was one of the people who routinely slept in the shop out at our Riverview corp yard during big storm events in order to be either coming in early, so he would make sure he would be here for his shift the following day, or sometimes the roads would be closed and he'd have to stay overnight. Then he slept a bunch of times over here at the fire department building for maybe a decade, then we built our dorms. And you know, there's times where Terry will show up for work on a Sunday and not leave until the following Friday, because he basically stays up here the entire time after his shift in our facilities. Always got a smile on his face, always willing to help other people, very approachable, one of the easiest guys to talk to that you'll ever meet, super humble and super skilled. So whenever we have new employees come in, you know, there's a lot of institutional knowledge in our fleet maintenance operation, and Terry's always more than willing to pass that along to new people. So thanks a lot, Terry. Really love having had the opportunity to meet you.
My honor.
Yeah, and let some of the other folks have a few comments.
Congratulations, Terry.
Thank you, Brett.
So Terry and I have known each other, worked for the town for going on 24 years now. He's everything Dan said and so much more. Definitely dependable, trustworthy, dedicated. Since I have known Terry, I don't think he's lived, the closest you've lived to the shop here in town is like 50 miles. So he's always, you know, he's always on time. He comes to work. It doesn't matter if there's a blizzard. If he's at his house, he'll show up and be there to support the team. Just have so much admiration and respect for Terry over the years. This has been a great career for him. And I'm just, I'm happy that I've known him and worked with him this many years. The one thing that really sticks out for me with Terry, and I think probably there's been a couple other instances where people have noticed this, but in the wintertime, we have night shifts on our fleet side. And, you know, coming into the organization, going into night shifts, you know, Terry's always stood up, stood out on holidays, in the wintertime, hey, I'll take the shift. You spend time with your family. He's always supported, you know, other employees that have families and always stood up to make sure that they had that time to take over for those folks, for those important holidays. So I totally am grateful for that. Terry's been, like I said, a phenomenal coworker, and yeah, that's all I have to say. Congratulations. You'll be missed, for sure.
Yeah. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Tom Dewirem, the fleet supervisor. Worked with Terry for just under 19 years now. I've never met a man more dedicated to his job. This guy, I tell you, and as living as far away as he was, he was always there. I can count on him. So yeah, 31 years, and it's a retirement well-deserved, my friend.
Well, thank you, Tom.
Good luck.
Appreciate you a lot.
My name's John Hood. I haven't been here as long as anybody else, these guys. Been here my fifth year, knowing Terry. But I've been in this business a long time. It's pretty rare you run into a guy with the skills that this guy has. He has a ton to teach, and not only that, just his character. He's always got a joke. He's fun to work with when bad birds are flying in a shop environment, which happens daily. Terry's the first one to come up with a crack and make you laugh about the situation you're in. But it's been an honor to work with Terry. It's very few men I've seen like that. Congrats, Terry.
Thank you, John.
Congratulations, Ben. I just want to say thanks for your service, Terry, and ditto to everything these gentlemen said, and we'll see you soon. Thanks.
He thinks he's going to retire. I think he's going to come by and have beers.
Yeah, I was just going to say what a loss for the town of Truckee, and was grateful to work with them the short time that I did. So what a great guy.
You do well. You already have.
Haven't been here long. I've been here almost a year, and I've learned quite a bit from Terry. He's a good worker and great teacher. Be a loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
I'm going to jump in over here, Terry. Sorry, I didn't comment. I'm not sure I'm excited to hear there's words flying in the shop, so we can talk about that. Terry, you better share your joke book with the rest of the team so they can fill in that gap. But, I mean, 31 years, it's a rarity now that we have employees serving the same organization for their career. You were with the county before that. Your dedication, your loyalty, but above that, and your teammates spoke to this, you are probably one of the kindest employees we have. You're always smiling. You always are just here to do the job, and there's no drama. You're just here to do the work. And for everybody that can drive the roads during the snowstorms, of course, the crews out on the streets plowing, a big part, but if it wasn't for this team over here, they wouldn't have the equipment that's working to make that happen. So you really are the silent heroes of the town, and I don't think people recognize that enough. So thank you for your service, and thank you for the work you've done.
My honor.
And with that, we have a key to the town of Truckee, so you can come back anytime. You could fix some chains, you know, you can come help out.
You're really honest.
October 1993 to December 2024. So let's give it up for Terry. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I've got one thing to say, and I couldn't have done this without good people and good crew members like this, great bosses, town council, all my fellow employees that work in Public Works. You guys are wonderful. You made my job super easy, and this is the best place I've ever had to work. I've got the opportunity to work where you got to learn and try new things. There's no other agency like it, and thank you all.
The first part of our agenda this evening, we've got retirements, we've got weather statements, we've got celebrations. We're going to move into the winter readiness presentation. Of course, yeah, actually, we're going to actually, let's, before we go into James' presentation, is there any public comment on either of the two? Don't leave yet, Lisa and Terry. Just really quick, Dan, keep them here for just a second, and you too, Lisa. Is there any public comment on either of those awards? Anybody? Yep, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. Turn your mic on, though, Sarah.
There we go. Sarah Green, Truckee resident, and I don't know Terry, but I do want to recognize Lisa. She has been a role model and a mentor in my life, and I just appreciate all that she's done for this community through the Watershed Council and beyond. The Watershed, she's created an organization that's, you know, exemplary in this field, and I truly have followed, tried to follow her lead in the work that I've done in watershed stewardship. And so I want to thank her personally for everything she's done. She's been fabulous.
Thank you, Sarah. Close public comment, unless there are any others. Bring it up for some quick council member comments from Councilmember Clovestad to start.
Yeah, thank you. Terry, I just want to say thank you for your service and your obvious support of your teammates, but primarily your mentorship. Clearly, you have taught so many people so much, particularly about service and commitment. And so for that, I just really want to thank you. And Lisa, I am so happy that you are transitioning to this new phase of your life, and I want to take the moment to tell you how much your service has meant to my heart and my soul. I have learned so much from you, from the very first Truckee River Day, all the way through to the River Talks and all the amazing inspirational projects you have brought forth to this community. But primarily, I want to thank you for helping me establish and develop a deeper connection with my environment through your work. And I think that is going to be your biggest legacy for not just me, but for everybody that has ever worked on one of your projects or on Truckee River Day, because you really instill that in us of this is ours to protect, this is ours to develop sustainably. So thank you for your service. Your legacy will ripple on for decades.
Very well said, Councilmember Clovestad. And Terry and Lisa, thank you both for your dedication to the town. I think it's incredible, people like both of you that make this place such a wonderful place that we love so much. And I think as Councilmember Clovestad said, not only did you each make positive impacts, but you are teaching the future generation how to continue to make positive impacts and to keep our town running. So Terry, that was incredible to hear from your entire team and how much you've been able to teach them, so thank you for that. And then Lisa, I mean, I've learned so much from you personally in the various meetings and committees I've served on with you or part that you've led, and I've been able to learn so much. So not only your impact on the watershed, but also helped me become a better leader as well. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Henderson, anything to add?
Just really quickly, obviously echo everything that's been said. Lisa, you've just been such an incredible partner and collaborator and catalyst for environmental stewardship in our community, and I can't even begin to contemplate the thousands of lives that you have probably directly touched through your work. And so that really lives on. And I think that you see it lives on at Town Hall, even in some of the goals that we have adopted around climate and the environment. But all of the organizing, all of the events, all of the advocacy that you have done to really elevate this as a core value amongst our community. So thank you so much, and we're sad to see you go. Michelle, I know we're in good hands. We're excited for that as well, but just really hope that you enjoy this next phase of your life and hope to still see you around Town Hall once in a while. And Terry, I don't know you well personally, but I can say I have taken those ride-alongs in snowstorms and just have had that glimmer of sort of how hard it works, how everyone at the team works, how hard it is to maintain all of that equipment, to do it in the harshest of conditions, to do it when you're under, you know, a snowstorm is coming and maybe something breaks down and you have to get it back up. And I think it was clear just from hearing from all of your teammates tonight that you've touched a lot of folks as well, and your legacy lives on in everyone that you have mentored, and it's clear that you've deeply impacted the culture of everyone that you work with. And so I'm really happy for you that you are retiring and excited that there's a whole generation that's carrying on your torch as well. Thank you.
I share the thoughts and feelings of my fellow council members. Lisa, in particular regard to the Watershed Council, this town is, we luxuriate in the excellent nonprofits we have. I don't know of any other community that has such an array of just excellent nonprofits. And the Watershed Council stands out among all these outstanding organizations as a model. And one of the finest things about the Watershed Council is how you are able to retire, knowing that the Watershed Council is so well-organized, is so strong, has such a longstanding commitment and momentum that it will continue well beyond your retirement. And we can look forward to a lot more precious meadows to visit and enjoy. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for all those comments, and appreciate you guys once again. Thank you both. And congratulations, obviously. With that, we're closing council member comments. We're good on public comments. We're going to move into item 5.3. James, you can follow that up with hopefully some snow coming this weekend or maybe even tomorrow night, as I'm sure you're the meteorologist in the house. Or you can just prepare us for winter, whatever you choose. The good news or the bad news?
The emergency manager is often ends up the de facto meteorologist. But yes, I mean, even though it's a tough act to follow with Terry's recognition, it is apropos, because much of the work that Terry did and the team that he works on helps the town be ready for winter. And so with that, I was a little concerned that we'd be doing this a little bit too late in the season, based on some of your comments, Mayor. But with a relatively dry fall and the winter weather advisory that the National Weather Service just issued, it seems like an appropriate time to check in and talk about winter readiness. And so first, I wanted to talk about what the town has been doing to prepare for winter. And most of those activities have been centered around four main subjects, so increased awareness, coordination, outreach, and some action. And so part of that awareness has been attending some of our great partners at the National Weather Service Reno office and their pre-winter briefings. And to sum up really those briefings, it's to expect the unexpected. We're going to be having a La Niña winter, and if you look back historically, during La Niña winters, there have been both incredibly wet and incredibly dry winters, and some exceptional, unremarkable winters. And so we're going to stick with the expect the unexpected, because even if we do have a relatively dry winter, we could still see major storm events that are very impactful. And so because of those potential impacts, we've been doing a lot of coordinating internally and externally. So internally, we had a pre-winter coordination meeting between myself, the Office of Emergency Services, and the Public Works Department. Happy to say that Public Works has reported that their staffing levels are some of the best that they've seen in many years, which is a huge help. Their equipment is looking great, thanks to the great team over in Fleet. And we really work to identify some potential needs that might arise, so that way when we do have those critical events, that the Office of Emergency Services can quickly step in and try to assist Public Works do the incredible work that they do during these winter events. We also attended meetings with Caltrans and County Office of Emergency Services to make sure that we're connected with them and understand what their plans are this winter. Fortunately, I was able to get together with the Recreation and Park District, Red Cross, and Nevada County Public Health, and did an evacuation shelter assessment, which is fitting really in the summertime during the wildfire potential evacuations, but also in the wintertime if we see some events that require evacuation. So it was a good opportunity to take an assessment, identify potential needs ahead of time, and work through those issues. And then finally, as many of you are likely aware, that the county has been working hard with the assistance of the town to try to identify some plans for emergency sheltering for our unhoused populations who are the most vulnerable to these conditions. And so there are plans in place, and we'll be working to help support the county in those efforts. With community outreach, we're fortunate, able, fortunate to be able to connect with our chamber and speak with the local town talk and help connect with community members there on winter weather readiness. And we've also made sure to provide some information to our short-term rental owners to make sure a lot of that information gets passed on to our visitors, because most long-term residents in Truckee know well what to do in winter. And if you're a new resident, you learn quickly on what to do, but those visitors that come up for the weekend might find themselves in tough positions. So we try to make sure that we share that information out to connect to those community members of Truckee. And finally, with the actions, working with the Public Works Department, we're going to try to identify a permanent sandbag location. There's not many instances where those sandbags are typically necessary, other than those rain-on-snow events that can happen. And during those times, we will identify them and staff up our sandbag stations throughout the town. But there is frequently a need during early-season rain events that sandbags are in interest of the community. And so we're working on identifying the location where community members can go and fill up sandbags and take them to help deal with those localized flooding issues that might happen with high-rain events and then later in the season as well. And so more to come on that information, and we'll be sharing that out with the community once we've activated that sandbag location. So now, what can we all do to prepare? As I mentioned, most Truckee residents know very well what to do to prepare for winter, but this is a good reminder for all those residents and good information for those new residents in town. And so I could spend all night, which I know you all don't want me to do, going over each of these items and all the details, but I will be providing a website, which is really handy on the town's website, to get all this information after I quickly go through this list. But really, the important things that you want to focus on is making sure that you can be self-sufficient. There's a lot of personal responsibility when it comes to disasters, and winter weather is no different. So making sure that you can be self-sufficient, and it's not just food and water, it's stocking up on fuel if you have a generator, it's wood if you have a wood-burning stove, and it's flashlights, it's medical supplies, things like that, that if you were really stuck in your house for several days before the crews are able to catch up on the street snow removal, that you will be all right. And I also do want to stress the importance in any disaster or any emergency of neighbor helping neighbor. Know what your needs are, communicate those to your neighbors, and understand what your neighbor's needs are, because that's really how you're going to help solve most of your problems during an emergency event. I did want to make sure I highlight, if you do have backup power, if you do have alternate heating sources, that you make sure to use that safely. Carbon monoxide is a real threat, so making sure that you have, you're using it outside if you have a generator, or if you have alternate heating sources that emit carbon monoxide, that you're doing that safely. Couldn't be here without mentioning Code Red alerts. It's our primary tool to reach our community members during emergencies, and the National Weather Service also uses Code Red to send out emergency alerts. They do that through the integrated public alert and warning system that FEMA provides. And to close out really is making sure that you stay informed. And so following the National Weather Service, who is our weather authority, I know there's a lot of great weather forecasting sources out there, but sticking and making sure that you stay on top of what the National Weather Service is saying, who really take a good big-picture approach at what the forecast is doing. And finally, if you find yourself on the roads, make sure that your vehicle is ready, topped off on fuel, charged up on power, blankets, food. You might think you're going out for a quick trip, even on I-80, and all of a sudden the weather conditions change, you have a vehicle accident with a big rig, and you find yourself stuck in heavy snow and unable to get out. So making sure that you're prepared for all those scenarios. And so with that, I'll close by sharing our townoftruckee.gov/ready, which is a great resource for all emergency information. And then I know it's a little bit of longer URL, but that'll bring you directly to our Winter Resources page. And with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you, James. We're going to hold off. We'll hear Jen's report, and then we'll hit both of you if there are any questions on either.
Thank you. I'm going to be pretty brief tonight. Switch mics, okay. Going to be pretty brief tonight. You have a lot on your agenda. I do want to announce that we have an Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accessibility, a new idea program action plan workshop to get some community feedback on the direction that we're headed. That is at the Arts Center downtown Truckee, Monday the 16th at 5:30, from 5:30 to 7:30. So if you're interested in providing feedback on that, we encourage you to come. We do realize it's the holiday season, and that may be hard for people, so beginning next year, we'll have a survey going out as well and another opportunity to provide feedback at that point. to provide feedback at that point. We are closed. Town Hall is closed the two weeks of Christmas and New Year's. I want to be very clear, we are working. We will have staff working. You can call staff. They'll be answering phone numbers. It's just an opportunity to allow some staff to take time off, but really to allow the community to enjoy the holidays, not be worried that we're doing things that they want to get engaged in and not be able to provide that engagement level. So buildings closed, staff is working. Please call if you need inspections or any other services. PD is open as normal, as is our Public Works roads crew. We'll be out there, especially if we have some weather. Last two festive Fridays of the season as well, this Friday and next Friday, the 20th in downtown Truckee. So please shop local and support our businesses. And lastly, and maybe most importantly, we hope that everybody has a very safe and happy holiday. Tarte Connect will be having extended hours through the holiday weeks and through the New Year's. So if you're planning to go out, go out with friends, enjoy dinner, enjoy drinks, use Tarte Connect. It'll be operational until about 1:30 in the morning. So use that service, be safe, and have a great holiday.
And thank you, Jen. I think I saw, or maybe Alfred, but I saw a little message on the Tarte Connect app that winter hours start. Do we have an exact date or time?
Thursday. Thursday, the 12th.
Thursday, the 12th. And that'll be 6:30 a.m. to 1?
To midnight.
Midnight.
And then the 26th through the 31st, it goes till 1:30 a.m.
All right. Thank you. Good job. Great. Any council questions or comments? Council Member Henderson? No. Vice Mayor Zabriski? Council Member Close Dad Romack? Okay, we're good. Any public comment on either of those presentations? If you don't know how to shovel, they're giving shoveling lessons here at the town, Thursday, 8 a.m. James will be here to help you. We got you. Great. We're going to go into a record-setting consent calendar tonight. This is, this is definitely an unofficial record. So you're all going to have to hear me drone on for 19 consent items. Our staff has been very busy, apparently, locking up our consent calendar. So here we go. 6.1, minutes of November 12th. 6.2, adoption of the hosted rental and transit occupancy tax and short-term rental ordinance cleanup amendments. 6.3, adoption of ordinance approving amendments to the zoning map and lot line adjustments on Rocky Lane. 6.4, appointment of members to the Truckee Tax Measure Citizen Oversight Board, who I believe are here in the audience. 6.5, the treasurer's report for the quarter ended September 30th. 6.6, Assembly Bill 413, parking near crosswalks, reduction ordinance adoption. 6.7, agreement with the Truckee, Tahoe Truckee Unified School District for provision of public educational and governmental television services. 6.8, design contract authorization for the rail yard mobility hub Phase 2B. 6.9, downtown railroad pedestrian crossing feasibility study update. 6.10, acceptance of the non-town-maintained road snow removal reimbursement policy. 6.11, law enforcement handheld and portable radio purchase contract award. 6.12, authorizing a letter to support Nevada County Behavior or Health Bond Funding. 6.13, the North Balloon Track Snow Storage Easement Abandonment. 6.14, updates to the forgivable loan for new ADU creation program and forgivable loan for existing unpermitted ADUs. I am not done. 6.15, the budget amendment for public trashcan monitoring software. That is very exciting. 6.16, the Mobility Hub Phase 2A project notice of completion. 6.17, the Coldstream Commercial Drainage Easement Abandonment. 6.18, the acceptance of the grant award for the California Division of Boating and Waterways. 6.19, resolution and agreements for Measure E. Does this fully satisfy a record? Town Clerk Kelly, this is a record consent calendar. Amazing. There's some great questions that were asked by all the council members in the public comments section of the website, if anybody would like to see. With that, would any member of council like to pull anything from consent? All right, staff?
No, Mayor.
And the public. Wow. Okay, that is awesome. Council Member Romack, how about a motion to approve?
I'd like to motion that we approve our consent calendar.
And I will second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Consent carries. Thank you very much for being extremely efficient and diligent in all of that great work, staff. We appreciate that. Okay, we're going to move on to our exciting part of tonight, the election program. We're going to certify our election results. Kelly, you have a presentation?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
I just, I just want to let you guys know before you, it's a resolution to certify the election from November 5th that Nevada County put on, and we assisted with that. The results were that Courtney Henderson and Lindsay Romack will be on council for four more years. And in addition, Measure E passed with nearly 61% approval. So what I need from you is just a vote to certify the election results.
Excellent.
I have some questions.
Yeah. Any questions? No? You guys won unanimously. Congratulations. Well done. And we have some others in the room as well. Thanks to everybody who also volunteered their time, ran for other boards. We appreciate you very much for whether winners, losers, stepping into the ring is really what counts. And it was a really fantastic election season and well done by all the candidates out there. So thank you very much for that. With that, Vice Mayor Zabriski, how about a motion to certify our election results?
I do so move. We certify the election results.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Election results have now been certified. Awesome. We're now going to do our council reorganization. So we are going to have a new mayor. Thank you for this year and being able to serve as the mayor for my second time. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the community for all that support. And the way that this works, we're going to do mayor, we will then do vice mayor. After we select our new mayor, we need a nomination from the five of us, not from the community. So I'm looking for a nomination for mayor. And then we also need a second on that as well.
I would like to jump in and nominate Vice Mayor Zabriski to serve as our next mayor.
Great. I will second that. And so do we still, we still have to go and see if there are other nominations? Or no? Yes, I think we do, right? We've done this enough times. Are there any other nominations for mayor? Great. Seeing none, we have a nomination for Vice Mayor Zabriski to become Town of Truckee's mayor in 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Come on, this is your chance. No? Okay. You're the official mayor, Vice Mayor Zabriski.
And you get to take over the meeting, or at least for the time being. So you are now. Here you go.
We will move right on to the selection of a vice mayor. We're going to follow the same process, which means then, do I have any nominations for vice mayor?
I'll nominate Council Member Close Dad.
And do we need a second or not? I thought?
Thank you.
Okay.
I will second.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other nominations? Seeing none. Can we take a vote?
You can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Passes unanimously. And next, I believe we should have a plaque. Am I correct?
There is a plaque up at the podium, if you'd like to share words.
Former Mayor Polavy, do you mind joining me at the podium?
Yeah. So David, I want to present you with this plaque. I remember you referred to it as the golden gavel, but I guess this time it's the crimson plaque. And I want to say just a few words and then turn it over to you. But first of all?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, of course. Congratulations. David, over the past year as mayor, has been a fierce advocate for this town. In particular, he has championed housing, especially for our workforce. He has championed outdoor tourism and local businesses at so many levels, including the Small Business Big Applause Award. He has really looked at ways of integrating the town's actions with the community's involvement. He's really pushed for public participation, both through comments and presentations and through his own outreach, both locally and regionally and beyond. He doesn't share with the council all the occasions when he has gone elsewhere to tout the wonders of Truckee, but he's doing that. And he has a family and he has a business, and yet he still finds time to do all these things. So David really deserves recognition for his accomplishments as mayor, and I'm honored and pleased to have been able to have presented him with this plaque. So again, thank you, David. And now a few words.
Thank you, Jan. Yes, the gavel has changed colors since my last one. That will be, that will be great. Thank you. You know, just first and foremost, sorry, I just want to thank my family first. First of all, I thank my wife and my daughter, who have allowed me the time to do this and to spend as much time as I do, helping and listening and sharing and trying to explain to people everything that's going on out there. And yeah, it's important to me. Sorry. But really, at the end of the day, you know, it's the people of this community, and it's the community that drives a lot of what I do. As a gentleman who reached out today, Rob Dayton, who we use for some of our team building and council team building, I don't know if he knew what was going on today. That was super random. But he reached out and just asked me, you know, how that balance was going. And it allowed me time to really reflect on the last year and just really reflect on what I set out to do this year. And what I set out to do, I don't know if I ever said it when we were up on the dais, but I said it to myself, and I said it to Jen. And, you know, what we, what I set out to do this year was to just create consistency, create certainty, create opportunity, and create just space where we as a community can succeed, where our citizenry feel welcome, and where I can find balance in my own life, as now Mayor Zabriski mentioned, between, you know, giving the attention that all of the pushes and pulls on my life really deserve. And I tried to do that more so this year. As many of you know, the last time I was mayor in 2020, that didn't quite happen as planned. So this year was really an opportunity to reflect on that and provide that leadership to the community, to do all of the fun things that a mayor can do. I cut many ribbons, thanks to the chamber. I was able to attend the things that I'm most passionate about, which Mayor Zabriski mentioned, and really hopefully contributed in a positive way to everything that we have going here in the community. So yeah, I'm just honored to have served as mayor twice now. And I'm really lucky to be able to hand over the gavel to Mayor Zabriski. He's earned it. This is going to be his fourth year serving, fifth year? Fifth year? Because you went two and two. So I think it's his fifth year serving. So he's been with us for a long time. I want to thank my fellow council members. Absolutely. It's a pleasure to serve with all of you. And it's a pleasure to serve with staff, and it's a pleasure to work with staff and work on behalf of all of you. So thank you.
Would any of the council members like to comment? Courtney?
Yes, please. So actually, I did prepare a few remarks, because you have seen us through so much during this past year, from starting in on the implementation of all of our general plan policies, and there are hundreds of those, to adapting, sometimes completely revamping town programs and embracing, we're going to continually improve. We're going to do that for our community, and so much, so much more. And it's, you sort of alluded to it up there, it's so incredibly hard to do all of that while also doing everything else that you do. Being a business owner, being a partner, a dad, an outdoor enthusiast and an athlete, it's really, really hard. It's nights away from family, it's weekends and meetings and at conferences. It takes tremendous commitment, and you constantly show up, for all of us here and for the entire community here. I think that's something that I really, really respect about you, Dave, is just how direct and how candid you are. You never shy away from challenging conversations or difficult conversations. And that can create what I think of as healthy conflict. I think it's really, really positive. And if you're ever unsure of where any one of us stands on a certain policy or issue, you push us on it in a really, really beneficial way. I think it makes our conversations up on the dais so much stronger. You do it with us, you've done it with development projects that have come up, sometimes appeals that we see come over our desk and in so many other places. And you and I have had our moments when we've disagreed on the dais in, again, I think, a healthy way, but you also leave it on the dais. It doesn't linger. It doesn't impact future conversations. It's not personal, it's policy. And that's so crucial to a well-functioning council, to be able to truly state different perspectives and ideas around policy positions. So I really just truly appreciate your leadership in that and how candid and direct you are. I also really value your efficiency. Like, you keep us on task, and that's, that's really important, not just for us as council members, but out of respect to our staff, you know, some of whom have to drive down to Reno at 11 o'clock at night after a long council meeting. It's out of respect to our community to make sure that we're focused. Because at the end of the day, every single one of us in this room has limited bandwidth. And it's really important that we maintain our focus. And you're good at bringing us back to that, to this is the policy decision in front of us. This is our role to craft good policies. Let's make sure we're laser-focused on how we actually do that. So just in short, I'm so grateful for your leadership. When I first joined council four years ago, you immediately sort of took me under your wing and said, let's talk about this and this and this. And this is the thing that's going to be really hard. And we talked about balance right away. And that's still, I think, something we all struggle with, honestly. But I'm also just grateful for your commitment to this council, to your community. And there's so much that Dave does, and I'm sure will continue to do, that folks don't see. So I just really hope everyone tonight, I think we'll take a break after this, just congratulate him, because it's been an amazing. Thank you.
Council Member Romack?
Very well said. I agree with all the, all the comments that have been made. I did want to add, you know, I've had the pleasure, Dave Polavy, I feel like I call you Polavy, so I just want to call you that now. I've known you for a long time. I almost feel like a little bit like I've grown up with you in Truckee. You know, Dave and I, Polavy, first met at the radio station, and we got to do interviews together. We ran a little show for a few times. So, you know, I got to learn your passion for this place from the get-go and how much you are always looking to make this place better and to bring the joy and love you have for Truckee to everyone in Truckee and make it accessible to everyone in Truckee. So I've loved that about you. And then, you know, four and a half years ago, when I thought about running for council, I know I reached out to you and said, you know, should I get into this or not? And, you know, you, you were very forthright, and here, here's what it will take. But yes, you know, you should. So I really appreciate your encouragement. And then your leadership, I think, fierce, direct. I mean, those are important characteristics. We always know where you stand. But you have, again, the passion to support that. It comes from a place of love and care for this community. It comes from a place of love and care for this community. And so it's just been great to see and to serve with you. And I'm so glad you got the opportunity to serve in a non-2020 year and, you know, have ribbon cuttings, the, the bridge and our West River Street streetscape. That was so exciting and you did a fantastic job. So it's just been a pleasure. And I know we've all highlighted it, but you also are someone who has shared with all of us, make sure you balance all of your, all of your needs. And so I think your family is incredibly lucky too, that, 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 they are so important to you and you make them a priority. And I think that was really important to share with all of us coming into this. This job as a council member is really important, but so is our family as well as our other commitments. So thank you for all that and I look forward to continuing to serving with you.
Vice Mayor Kluftad?
Oh, you are on it already. That's impressive. Okay, twice former mayor. Now I can't call you future former mayor anymore. Well, I don't know, maybe I can. So a wild ride over these last six years, huh? Four measures successfully passed. It's unbelievable to me. It's unbelievable how much your vision has contributed to those successes. And everything that everybody else has said is so true, times 10. We love this community. We see it up here every time. You, you have definitely made this community better. So I hope you feel successful in that goal. We all see it. I think the biggest, the biggest thing for me is to recognize how astute you are at, at seeing the issue for how big it is, but also how narrow our opportunities are and being really clear about that up here. Because sometimes, you know, we, we get into trouble because we try to dig too deep or we try to do too much or we try to make it too broad. And you're like, nope, that's not our job up here. And, and I think that's really helped me set those boundaries that we've all talked about of what it is we can do up here, what we can't, and how to be realistic about that. So you've been an incredible mentor to me. And I really, really can't believe it has been six years. And I really can't wait to see what other trouble we get into over the next two. So, thank you. Thank you for your legacy.
Okay, now we're going to call for any public comment on the transfer of mayorship. Hustle up? As a former mayor would say.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate you, Councilwoman Pallavi, on your successful term as mayor. I'm telling you, I've been waiting for this all year. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Most people don't know, Dave and I are actually best friends. We, and I'm so glad you're going to have extra time to hang out with me. But no, in all seriousness, you have to respect a man that believes in his convictions. And we've had many impromptu debates at not so many places. But, you know, I want you to know I respect you and I appreciate your service that you've given to this town and the opinions that you've had that, you know, sometimes when I'm listening from the audience, you know, they're well-grounded, well-founded. And so I appreciate that. You don't always hear that from me, so I want you to hear that here publicly. So thank you very much for your service. Mayor Zabriski, what can I say about you? I have a great deal of respect for you. I certainly enjoy hearing your opinions and your questions from the dais. And I just love running into you around town and your lovely wife. So I'm, you know, pleased that you're starting your term as mayor and I look forward to working with you and then so does Kat. And I don't know what else to say. I can eat up another minute and a half, but I won't. So thank you very much. And thanks to all of you for everything that you put into this, you know, and it's very much appreciated, even though you don't always hear it from us. So thank you.
Hi, Colleen Dalton, CEO of Visit Truckee Town. I didn't have anything planned, but I guess, Dave, we really got to know each other during COVID, when the media was slamming us hard. And I think we went from 10 million in media value being a normal year to $110 million in value of media coverage. So you can imagine, left, right, left, right, Dave was fielding a lot of calls and attention to our town. So, but I guess the most important thing is that Dave has been the backbone of defending a resilient and strong tourism economy. And he helped me form the Visit Truckee Town Board and organization and has been on that board since formation in October of 2020. We have been through so much. Then COVID is just head spinning, but we came through it and we have a strong events and a strong strategic plan. And our board has always so appreciated your direction and your help and influence and understanding how government works and how we can have a symbiotic relationship with lodging and truly have a strong tourism economy that balances the community, our environment, and the wellbeing of our town. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I think now we're going to take maybe what? That 10? One more? Okay.
Hi, I'm Tony Alarcon. I don't live in Truckee. My parents and I built a house on Denton some 30 years ago. But Truckee's in my soul. I spend a lot of time up here. I live in a Los Gatos. It's a town similar in size. And David, as mayor of Truckee, I wanted to say truly thank you. You were the one council member that met with me when I wanted to talk about the Truckee Hilltop. It's a project that I set in public comments today. It's, it's actually been 16 years, not 26. I put in the letter, just feels like 26. But you took the time to meet with me and you gave me inspiration. I've been asked to run for town council in my town for multiple elections. And in two years, I think I will be, led by your example, truly. You gave some great guidance. I know you're passionate, as I am, about workforce housing and protecting the town of Truckee, the culture that it is and has been for many, many years. And so while we're not done yet on the hilltop, you'll be seeing me around more. And I look forward to coming and attending more meetings. And thank you again for all that you do for the town of Truckee and some of the great programs that you've led. I mean, just, I shared with my, my residents, the 50,000 you guys are giving for converting ADU housing. That's a deal to people. And it makes a huge difference and it's going to create workforce housing. And I just want to say thank you for your service and thank you for all of you. But David, what a great example. Thank you.
Okay, now I think that's all. And we'll take a 10-minute recess.
Are you going to lead us on this, Carissa?
I am, thank you. Carissa Binkley, Economic Vitality Program Analyst. And tonight, I'm here to talk about the Tricky Tourism Business Improvement District, also known as T-Bid Annual Report. I'll start with some context around it for TOT versus T-Bid. TOT is our transient occupancy tax. It's a tax on lodging. It contributes to the town's general fund, and its current rate is 12%. T-Bid is a self-assessment by the lodging properties. The town uses its taxing authority to collect on behalf of the T-Bid. And it's restricted to uses that provide a special benefit to the assessed properties as defined in the management district plan. And its current rate is set at 1.25%. Council's role around T-Bid is in a report to approve it or initiate a process to make modifications. Tonight, we're here to approve it or make the modifications. Overall, for T-Bid, council also does approval of formation or renewal of the T-Bid and approval of the management district plan, which is the governing document. Visit Tricky Tahoe is here tonight to talk about their great work. And just as an overview, they are the T-Bid Owners Association. They are in year two of their two-year strategic plan. And this coming year, we'll be working very closely with Visit Tricky Tahoe on their T-Bid renewal. That will be completed by June 30th, 2025, and that will require a vote of all the assessed properties and approval of town council. So on that note, I will introduce Jackie. I'm going to pull up her presentation. It's much prettier than mine. I'll let her introduce herself.
Okay, thank you, Carissa. And good evening, Mayor Zabriski and town council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share our annual T-Bid report. My name is Jackie Calvert, and I am the Director of Tourism Marketing and Management for Visit Tricky Tahoe. And I'm joined here by our CEO, Colleen Dalton, who you heard from earlier, and our Board Chair, Carrie wishes that she could be here, but unfortunately, she is sick. And then, of course, we have Dave Pallavi, who is also on our board and owner of Tahoe Mountain Sports. So I've met most of you, but just a little bit about me. I'm originally from New York, and I moved out here with a half-pack Subaru back in 2008 to attend Sierra Nevada College, just for the love of this place or the desire to be in this place. And my love affair with Tahoe swiftly started. And then, before I knew it, I was working at Palisades Tahoe, where I helped spearhead comprehensive marketing plans that really drove significant growth in digital channels and also just enhancing the guest experience for about 10 years. And then, I also, for a brief stint, was a business owner myself here in Tricky, where I supported local businesses and startups with some digital marketing strategy for three years. I have a deep love for this place, our natural environment, brand marketing, and positive results. And I'm so honored to be a part of an organization that has the same shared values. And I truly consider myself lucky to call this place home and raise my young family here. So with that, okay. So before we dive into the numbers and some of the core of our report, I thought I would open with some branding and storytelling and why it's so important. We've been working with our agency to help us assimilate who we are as a brand. What is Tricky? What are our values? What attributes make us stand apart? And who is the best-fit guest for our region? And this is such an important foundational exercise because it helps lay the groundwork for truly everything and acts as sort of kind of a moral compass that guides decisions on what we do and how we do it. In this increasingly competitive world, what attributes or values makes us stand out against the competition? What makes us stand out against a Jackson Hole, Breckenridge, even north like Tahoe or south like Tahoe? A well-defined brand can connect with visitors over shared values and differentiate themselves from their competitors. So at the start of this fiscal year, we embarked on a journey to do just that. With the help of 40 other leaders from our tourism industry, we gathered insight, input, and values that can start to help us assimilate our brand. And I'm excited to give you a little sneak peek on how we think we can start to define and tell that Tricky story today. Okay. Tricky is a rarity. As the last bastions of America's Old West are remodeled and tamed for the masses, Tricky has remained a true mountain community. While the wide-open wilderness of the Sierra Nevada, the pristine shores of Lake Tahoe, and the rail remnants in our historic downtown hint at our uniqueness, the story of Tricky's rareness is sent in settler signals. If visitors spend any time in our town, they'll quickly discover that our Olympic athletes, outdoor guides, snowboarding groms, and mountain bike trail builders are a testimony to our passion for progression. If they stay a little longer, they'll see that our grit is our proof of life. They'll see our funky shop fronts are a reflection of our entrepreneurial resilience. The seasonal workers are a sign of Tricky's magnetism. The old-timers, a reflection of our youthfulness. The parents, a commitment to raising one more generation of fearless, free-ranging families. And if you settle in long enough, you'll find out that Tricky's progressive and pioneering community is defined by its deeply held belief that in life, you get out what you put in. These signals are this community's certificate of authenticity and a beckoning call to those who value what's real. So hopefully, that resonates with all of you. And lastly, our brand essence. And this is that intangible core characteristic that defines who we are in our heart and soul. And if we could really only define ourselves as one true thing, it would be this: a living, breathing, mountain community. And this essence really helps us see our values and beliefs clearly. We must preserve and share our quality of life. And yet, we know our priority is clear. We will safeguard what makes this place extraordinary while inviting others to experience it responsibly. And sharing this way of life responsibly with visitors is critical to our success as a community. I think most of us who have been here for the past 10, 20, even five years, recognize the symbiotic relationship that we do have with tourism. So let's take a look at the economic impact of tourism for calendar year 2023. Half a million visitor trips to Tricky brought in 244 million in visitor spending, with overnight guests driving 70% of total visitor spending in Tricky's tourism-dependent businesses. Lodging guests spend five times more than day visitors, clearly demonstrating that lodging guests are the backbone of our tourism economy. Sorry, this then really just trickles down into other local businesses like entertainment, food and beverage, retail sales, et cetera. So this 63.4 million in taxable lodging sales equates to 7.6 million in TOT. The impact of lodging revenue on our economy and to the town of Tricky General Fund as the third-highest taxed income source cannot be understated. So during COVID, Tricky experienced unprecedented visitation, with lodging revenue peaking at 68 million in FY 2223. That generated about 8 million in TOT. However, last year, we saw an 11% decline in lodging revenue to 59.9 million. And we are forecasting an additional 9.5% drop in FY 2425 to 54.2 million, potentially reducing TOT to 6.5 million. And so this market normalization is happening, but it highlights the need for a robust and adaptable strategic plan. So as you know, our overarching responsibility with the T-Bid funding is to drive overnight lodging. We are in year two of our strategic plan, which is structured to fund improvements and activities in three broad pillars: brand support, sorry, brand promise, support, and experience. And this structure allows us to reallocate and flex funding between these pillars when significant trends or unexpected event impacts Tricky's tourism economy. So this year, we are doubling down in our brand budget, and 76% of this will be allocated to visitor attraction. Brand experience will continue to include funds for Tart Connect and events that support our shoulder seasons. Brand support includes costs for economic research, messaging, the community, and engaging our VIP partners. So I'm just going to go quickly into these three pillars and just address some of the high-level programs that we're going to be doing for this fiscal year. So under brand promise, we are focused on driving overnight visitation. So this year, you'll see, we're really committed to bringing this brand to life, that story that you saw at the beginning, making that come to life by overhauling our website to invest in new emerging tech. And then stewardship and responsible travel will really continue to be woven into everything we do. It is truly in our DNA, so that will continue on. And then for brand support, we continue to collaborate and inform with primary activities, being agenda development and support for Supervisor Bullock's CCC meetings, attend Climate Transformation Alliance meetings, work closely with the Town of Tricky's Keep Tricky Green Department and STR ordinance team, and work with the TDMA and President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, just to name a few. And as a mountain community, highly reliant upon a strong lodging sector, advocating on behalf of our T-Bid payers is critical. So because of this, we published our new advocacy and process policy this year. To build cohesion, represent, and support our lodging T-Bid payers, we held the first annual celebration of Tricky Tourism, inviting all T-Bid payers and kicking off our T-Bid renewal campaign. We conduct biannual property manager and hotelier meetings to inform and advocate for their needs. And we continuously inform all T-Bid payers about our programs, services, and advocacy efforts. So lastly, with our brand experience pillar, we're committed to managing and protecting Tricky. In addition to funding Town of Tricky's Tart Connect services totaling $590,000 to date, we funded touchscreens at the Tricky Chamber Welcome Center and helped fund the expansion of historic downtown lighting for TDMA management. And lastly, we will fund three major events that aim to attract multi-day, midweek, or non-peak visitation. So the Tricky Tourism Business Improvement District continues to be a proven driver of economic, community, and environmental benefits to our town. Visit Tricky Tahoe has demonstrated success as a trusted tourism authority, delivering measurable results. With a strong strategic plan and an unwavering focus on a sustainable future, we are well-positioned to navigate the challenges and seize the opportunities. The future is bright for Tricky, and the T-Bid remains vital to our shared success. Thank you for your trust and continued support as we work together to ensure a thriving, balanced community for generations to come. Thank you, and I think I'll kick it back over to Carissa and open for questions.
Thank you, Jackie. And I'll just pull up a slide that reminds us what staff recommendation is tonight. Oops. Is to approve Tricky Tourism Business Improvement District 2024-25 Annual Report.
Okay, we'll go through council questions, followed by any public comments. Councilmember Henderson, again, do you mind going first?
I don't mind. I don't have any questions. It was a wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Klobstad?
Yeah, thank you. Beautiful presentation. I am just wondering if you want to take a moment or two to elaborate on your environmental and protection measures?
Sure. So to date, we have invested about 828,000 in 20-plus sustainable Tricky initiatives. And that has supported a number of different projects, such as the Johnson Canyon Trailhead build-out. It's also supported, of course, the Tart Connect. That's a really big initiative for us. It was 130K for this year, but in total, 590,000. So really just encouraging non-car travel while guests are here. It's also supported, we have a number of visitor guides that really help educate visitors while they're here to be a better steward for our environment, leave no trace sort of principles. We've also done a lot of trail building to help support, I'm blanking on the name of the trails that we've done.
We did a lot of like, basically the stewardship with all of the trail information, the A-frames and all of that kind of stuff, and then also west end.
And then the ADA access, right.
And west end beach, winter management, basically.
And so then, we've also launched an eco-green lodging standards for our independent homeowners. So there was never really like a standardized way for them to be more eco-green and friendly. And so we introduced a program to help them do that and get certified, and then be able to showcase that on our booking engine for our eco-conscious visitors. And then we also presented to Visit California just recently, a couple of months ago, about the quality of our water, to kind of piggyback on all of the tremendous work the Town of Tricky has been doing to sort of rebrand and position the water, the quality of water here, also to help support the ordinance of no plastic water bottles, like just creating this great educational campaign to ensure our visitors know that when they come here and they can't buy plastic water bottles in the grocery store, they should be able to trust and know that they can bring their reusable bottles here with them and fill up on great Tricky water.
Fantastic. Thank you for highlighting all of those.
Yeah, I probably missed a few, but.
Councilmember Romek.
Thank you. Sorry, and I was coughing. Your presentation was great. I wasn't leaving the room because of that. Just a question, increasing spending this year on brand promise, is that what the category is? Can you speak a little to some of the ways you try to entice more visitors to come in the off-season? Because I know there is sensitivity in our community of, we're busy in the busy season. So maybe speak to a little of what you're trying to do to bring visitors not in the busy times?
Yes, that is always our primary focus, is really highlighting these off-season times. So as an example, right now, we're actually running a booking offer for anyone who is looking to book lodging from middle of October to December 15th. And so we're actually giving them $100 gift card to spend at 60 local businesses if they do book two nights. So you will never see us running that promotion over Christmas or over the Fourth of July. We recognize that we don't need people during those times. It's, you know, right now, our local businesses are maybe cutting staff. We don't have the snow, unfortunately, right now. So it's really just trying to.
So it's really just trying to drive that visitation during those, those non-peak times. And then also, you know, with the support of, um, those three events that we're going to be sponsoring, those are all over, um, midweek periods or early summer non-peak times to try and drive visitation because they do have a larger following and can bring people in. We know people travel here and will book lodging.
I'd also maybe just add a, a little further on that would be that it's, we sort of had a, a bit of a conundrum a couple of years ago, and, and one of our board members said it quite bluntly, which is it's hard to fish when there aren't any fish to come, basically. And so that was referring to some of the off-season, uh, tactics that we were spending a lot of money on. So as part of that brand promise, I think, um, what Jackie's also brought is just an improvement in the overall experience of even during peak season, we're not necessarily like spending more on adwords during any specific time of year or, or anything like that. We're running promotions with all of our events, fall to different areas. But what we're trying to do, I would say VTT is, is basically spread out that visitation. We're trying to provide resources. You guys should all go check out, I can't believe you didn't talk about your new AI tool on the website, which is kind of the coolest thing ever. But if you go to the Visit Truckee Tahoe website and you just type in like, hey, we're a family of three and we want to come to Truckee for three days, what, what could I do? Like, there's now this whole integration and that really drives, I would say, a broader assortment of just like, yep, these are the three things you do when you're in Truckee, and everybody's going to go to the same place at the same time on July 3rd, and that's what you're going to do here. And so I think it's, it's a mix in that brand promise category of, of yes, promoting off-season, but what we've come to realize is off-seasons are kind of returning to their off-season reality. Um, and as a business, as a business owner, I can tell you that firsthand. Um, so I don't want to overpromise that VTT and, and VTT will never overpromise that all of a sudden October is going to be the new July. That's really not the case. It's more how, how does Visit Truckee accept the visitation patterns that we're going to get? How do we build those visitation patterns in a sustainable way? But also, how does that experience manifest itself and how do we spread people out once they're here? Uh, and I think that's a big part of that brand promise is, is providing some of that opportunity to our visitors is that, before they come, more than anything.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. And I think the other thing that maybe I do want to talk about is it overlaps a little bit between the brand promise and the experiences, uh, the, the management side of things. As we do transition into some of those busier periods, like you'll see all of our messaging really takes a big shift towards destination management. Here's how you can be that responsible visitor. Here's how you can take public transportation while you're here, leave your car at home. So it's also, you'll see a very conscious shift in our messaging as we enter some of those busier periods to be just a responsible traveler while you're here.
Great. And then just one more question. I think this presentation and the statistics you shared, and I know you shared at your T-Bid party, um, are fantastic, and I think great for our community to understand the impact that tourism has. Are you taking the show on the road? And what are ways you're, you're sharing this with the broader community besides being here tonight and all these lovely people in the room?
It's a great question, and it's certainly something that we, um, want to continue to build upon. We've sent out, um, a number of different direct mail pieces. We constantly communicate with our payers, um, and, you know, with the local community. But that is certainly a goal is to can, you know, to build upon that momentum and make sure that our community is aware of this symbiotic relationship that we have with tourism. We don't want, um, you know, folks to, uh, be overly protective. We want them to be prideful of like what we have here and to share it. But of, of course, like, we're all, all going to take responsibility into, into that decision. But yeah, it's certainly, it's an important, those are important, um, facts and figures to be sharing with the community. So we're always open to suggestions, but we'll continue to kind of ring the bell loudly and, and build upon that.
Do you have any questions, Councilmember Paulavie?
I don't. I get to be at all the board meetings on a monthly basis, and that was a great presentation, Jackie. Good job.
I have just a couple of questions. I can see with the drop in revenue that you would want to put more money into branding. But I also see you're cutting your stewardship program in half. What impact will that have on the stewardship program itself?
Yeah, um, well, we're continuing to invest in that. I think right now, what we really saw as the opportunity that we needed to seize on was, um, as this decline is happening, you know, there's a lot of other mountain communities to, to go to, like we kind of mentioned, maybe a Breckenridge or a Bend or, or what have you. And so having this foundational work of the brand will then help us propel and really be sort of that, that guide for us to see what we need to invest in the future in sustainable initiatives. We're constantly looking at different things, um, or asking for people to bring those to the table at our board meetings. I wouldn't say it's like that's the end-all, be-all. This is just sort of the real foundational work that we wanted to get done for this fiscal, and then we can take a look at how we can continue to expand upon our stewardship initiatives.
And Mayor, yeah, I was going to add the Tart Connect piece, so I'll, I'll add it on. So, so a huge piece of that budget over the previous two years was Tart Connect funding, which was a huge bucket, um, six, six hundred.
Of the stewardship?
Correct, yeah. So that was a huge.
Two sixty last fiscal year and one thirty this fiscal year, so it, but the optics are whoa.
Yeah. It's a little bit more of just a, a switch in how basically VTT will, won't be funding Tart Connect.
Right.
In the future, based on Measure E's passing, based on the future of Tart Connect, which I'm sure we'll talk about over the next few months. And so it was more of a budgetary, um, correction, I think. Um, and, and that was a commitment that VTT made for a few years, and so kind of pulling back. Um, and not to say that it's going to go away, but just a reallocation, I think, primarily.
And then Jan, you know, the last time we did a brand, uh, development work and a website was literally five years ago, five years ago. So it's time, right? And we have to have some upfront investment, and then we, we hired.
Right, oh, sure.
Right? So that's an unusual expense this year as well.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and then Jackie, what could the town be doing to mutually benefit your members and our residents?
Great question. Um, I think, you know, continued partnership and, um, a lot of the incredible work that you do, we just want to continue to, um, communicate that to our visitors, like, um, so I really just think it's constant communication and collaboration. Um, and, um, yeah, we all, all rising tides lift all boats. So it's truly a collaborative effort. We couldn't do without, we couldn't do what we do without, um, Town of Truckee and all the other incredible partners, um, that we work with. So just continue collaboration.
That's a nice description, rising tide. The, okay, my last question has to do with the incoming, incoming federal administration and their plans to initiate deportation proceedings for undocumented workers. Has VTT looked at what if any impact that might have on the labor force on which its members depend, or any other ripple effects?
That's a great question. Um, and, uh, to be honest, no. We, we have not looked into that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council members? Okay, are there any public comments? Okay, all's, um, we're being asked to do is approve the, um, annual report for VTT or the, the T-Bid.
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure.
And I don't know if other people have comments, but just, uh, it was a great presentation, a ton of great information, and I love the forward thinking, and again, the easy-to-read statistics are great. One thing came up, and I feel like we've talked about it before, so I just wanted to highlight, is, um, getting our visitors here from the airport. And I think we talked a lot about, you know, Tart Connect, and we really appreciate the investment in that, but just food for thought moving forward, again, in supporting the North Lake Tahoe Express or something else to, again, get more visitors here without having to rent a car. So I, I'm very happy with this report, but I just, since you're both here, and Paulavie, you're here, um, just wanted to put that out there as food for thought for the future.
And I'll echo her, just because from my experience on the Nevada Transportation Commission and then the, the North Tahoe Truckee Transportation Management Association, this, we're getting a better transportation going between the airport and this region is, uh, still remains a challenge. We're still searching for a more perfect solution.
And I'll agree with that, and I, and I just want to add that I don't think this is necessarily, we're asking you to fund this, but you are really good at bringing people to the table, and that's probably what we need most in that particular town.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I agree. Okay, do we have, um, can this take a motion and a vote?
Can I get a couple of quick comments in?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, uh, you know, a wonderful job, Jackie, really great presentation, those first few slides for all of you. Uh, I'm not sure that you realized it, but, um, that's like the first time that we're unveiling that, right? Yeah, I pretty thought so. So really well done there, and, um, you know, hopefully that resonated with you guys. Um, you know, just staffing at VTT has, um, been wonderful, and, and Jackie's addition to, to working with Colleen, and, and we have one other, uh, woman there, Jen, uh, have really been driving the organization forward. What didn't get spoken about, uh, we do have a renewal coming up. Uh, it'll be coming up in June and petition going out, most likely being approved in January. So, um, there'll be some future decision-making, potential budget implications as well for how VTT moves forward, uh, either with more equal or, or potentially less budget, um, and hopefully continues to exist. The reason it exists is because of, uh, the petition and the, the, um, assessment that the lodging providers do choose to assess on themselves to pay into the organization. The town has its own, and that is a requirement, but you have to remember that the lodging providers are voting in favor of self-taxation in order to fund this organization. So I think one of the interesting pieces that you asked Mayor Zabriskie of, uh, I chuckled, you know, what, what can the town do better, uh, in working with VTT? I think you're going to start to see some of that as soon as renewal takes place. Um, definitely some interesting feedback on the short-term rental program, um, that will be coming. I know VTT is already working on, uh, organizing at least opinions and, and, um, potential options for adjustments to that program moving forward. I would also encourage both our council and our staff to consider, um, you know, VTT's reach and, um, just marketing prowess is, is really top-notch. That's another great area of, of overlap and potential partnership for both marketing, communications, outreach, um, to different audiences, but also just some of the tools that, uh, VTT is really solid at using is, is stuff that, you know, the town, it's not ever going to be in our wheelhouse, for example, on certain things. So I think from a council perspective and from a staff perspective, keeping an open mind, um, open mind as to different communication channels and understanding the, um, abilities, as you stated, of our different nonprofits and partners as, as they exist in the community. And that's really all I wanted to add, and I encourage you guys to check out the new website, the new AI tool, encourage your friends who are visiting to utilize it, and, um, yeah, just a great job to staff. Appreciate you guys.
Okay, can we just, uh, run through a motion second and take a vote, or do you not want that?
You can do that, thank you.
We can do that. How about a motion? Don't be shocked.
I move that we approve the Truckee Tourism Business Improvement District 202425 Annual Report.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's unanimously passed. You got the first and the second? Yeah. Okay, now we'll move on to eight point two, the Reach Codes with Erin Brewster.
Good evening, council members. I'm Erin Brewster, the Sustainability Program Manager for the town, and I'm here to present staff's recommendation for further research of building energy and electric vehicle charging Reach Codes. So the reason we are here to talk about Reach Codes is the town's climate action goals. So the town adopted, as you know, a greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal of reducing emissions 80% across the community by, uh, 2040 compared to our 2008 baseline. And the town adopted a climate action plan, or CAP, as part of the 2040 general plan that outlines a path towards that goal. The CAP includes two items related to the Reach Codes we'll be talking about tonight that address energy use from buildings and electric vehicle charging infrastructure in new construction. So this chart shows all of the, uh, anticipated GHG emission reduction items included in that climate action plan. The vast majority of those are from the energy sector, and so, uh, that includes everything except for that dark blue, uh, portion of the bottom of each column. So as you can see, reductions in energy use and renewable energy are expected to account for the majority of our climate action, um, all the way through 2050. Uh, the item in the climate action plan related to Reach Codes is specifically for new construction. So that's part of that thin yellow line in that 2030, uh, anticipated emissions reductions. That's 1.3% of total anticipated, uh, GHG emission reductions community-wide, uh, in 2030. Uh, there is no reduction from Reach Codes anticipated beyond that in the CAP because, uh, it is anticipated that other more stringent measures will be adopted past that time. Existing building energy efficiency is, uh, the largest share of these GHG reductions, uh, but the CAP does not include Reach Codes for existing buildings, even though they were considered as part of this process. There's also an item in the CAP for electric vehicle charging ordinance to address transportation sector emissions by requiring pre-wiring or installation of EV charging infrastructure in new development. And similar to the other CAP item as written, this would only apply to new development, but we did consider measures for existing buildings as well. Uh, the Reach Codes we're discussing tonight are only one small part of the town's overall strategy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from building energy use, uh, which is referred to as building decarbonization. So I just wanted to show for context, all of the building decarbonization measures, both for existing buildings and new construction that are included in our climate action plan. And you can see that Reach Codes are just one small part of that. In addition to Reach Codes, the town can explore other regulatory measures, incentives, financing strategies, education and outreach, and programs providing technical assistance or direct installation of measures. Other existing building measures will be evaluated as part of the roadmap to decarbonization measure, that's, uh, CAP Item 7.h. Uh, and staff expects to present that to council in early 2025. So this is a very high-level overview of our building energy use, um, in Truckee. As you can see, Truckee's building stock is dominated by residential buildings here in green. Uh, that is primarily detached, single-family homes, which are 84% of all of our, the buildings in our community. Uh, while they only account for 4% of the total building stock, non-residential buildings like commercial, industrial, and institutional buildings are responsible for a disproportionate share of energy sector greenhouse gas emissions. So you can see that they're only 4% of total buildings, but 30% of total greenhouse gas emissions from energy in 2022. I do want to point out that's not necessarily an indication of energy waste or a greater potential for emissions reduction in non-residential buildings. The primary reason for this difference is that non-residential buildings are significantly larger on average than residential buildings, and many non-residential use types are just inherently more energy-intensive. So, you know, as you can imagine, a hospital that operates 24 hours a day is going to use a lot of energy per square foot compared to a single-family home, and a commercial kitchen is going to be preparing a lot more meals than, uh, typical residents. So as you can see, um, on that column in the far right, while non-residential buildings are 30% of energy-related emissions, they're only 23% of estimated reductions included in the CAP. So we're here tonight to talk about Reach Codes. Uh, Reach Codes are local amendments to the California Energy Code that reach beyond the minimum statewide standards for building energy use. Local jurisdictions can adopt a Reach Code as part of their strategy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by promoting energy efficiency and renewable energy. There are three requirements for Reach Codes. They must be stricter than the statewide code, they must be cost-effective, meaning any upfront costs for implementation must be fully offset by energy savings over time, and they must be approved by the California Energy Commission in order to be enforceable. Reach Codes do need to be readopted when the Energy Code is updated every three years, and as part of the and as part of this readoption process jurisdictions must demonstrate, um, that they, the reach code is still stricter than the updated statewide code and is also still cost-effective. There are other types of local building code amendments that support GHG emissions reductions and are not, um, specifically amendments to the energy code, so those are not going to be subject to these same requirements. That includes electric readiness requirements like pre-wiring or electrical panel upgrades for future electrification or electric vehicle charging infrastructure. For purposes of this meeting, we will collectively refer to all of these types of building code amendments as reach codes, even if they are not energy code amendments. So the summary provided tonight represents the end of the first of three possible stages of the town's evaluation of reach codes. At each stage, the town council must provide direction to proceed, um, like we are at this public meeting. And as you can see, this first stage involves very preliminary research and cost-effective analyses for the general types of reach codes that the town could pursue. And this is intended to provide the town council with an overview of these types of building code amendments available to the town, as well as initial community feedback. And the reason, you know, we are at this point only looking at a pretty high level is that there are, you know, hundreds or thousands of possible combinations of measures that would be evaluated and we, uh, can't evaluate each of them in great detail and so we are kind of looking to narrow down our focus before going to that next stage. So should the town council direct staff to pursue further research for any of the reach code options discussed tonight, uh, we would need to proceed to that next stage, um, which would involve additional cost-effectiveness studies, uh, we would need to update the ones we did, uh, for the 2025 energy code, um, more detailed evaluation of cost impacts on residents and businesses, additional stakeholder and community engagement, and that's the phase at which we would get into the details of, uh, policy recommendations. So tonight, uh, we will be providing a summary of the reach code exploration process, which began in 2022, with the intent of obtaining direction from council on which, if any, categories of reach codes should be researched further. Staff are not recommending adoption of any specific policy at this time, as additional research would be needed to fully evaluate options and develop a policy proposal. If council directs staff to proceed with further research, uh, that's when we would evaluate details such as specific upgrade requirements, permit triggers, exemptions, um, in that next phase. So the town's reach code exploration process began in January of 2022 when council directed staff to issue an RFP for a consultant to facilitate, uh, evaluation of reach codes and convene a community stakeholder committee. So the consultant, ID 360, began the process with a technical analysis of our permit data to determine the most appropriate areas of focus for Truckee. A stakeholder committee was convened in spring 2022 to provide feedback, uh, to both the town and our consultant through the reach code, uh, throughout the reach code exploration process. This committee had 15 community members, including local experts in building decarbonization, staff from local utilities, representatives of the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe, and two council members. Over the course of the past two years, the process has included eight stakeholder committee meetings and three community meetings to get feedback on reach code options. Based on feedback from the stakeholder committee, the contract with ID 360 was also amended to include customizing some of the statewide cost-effectiveness studies with local data and a community survey on building energy use, including reach code options under consideration, was conducted in summer of 2024. Staff analyzed all of the input received during this nearly three-year process to result in the recommendations presented here tonight. And I would like to take this time to thank our stakeholder committee members for all the time and input they've provided over the last two years. It was a very long process, as well as thanking all the community members who participated in this process since 2022. Part of the reach code exploration process included evaluation of the cost-effectiveness of potential energy code amendments. As I mentioned before, uh, these amendments must demonstrate they are cost-effective, meaning that any additional upfront costs are offset by savings, um, from reduced energy use over time. There are two different methodologies used to assess cost-effectiveness at a high level: on-bill, uh, which evaluates the customer perspective, and time-dependent valuation or a long-term system-wide cost, um, which evaluates the impacts on the energy system. While the town could adopt a reach code that is only cost-effective via one of these methods, staff recommends considering options that are cost-effective via both, um, based on the feedback we received. So there is a statewide codes and standards team, uh, that conducts cost-effectiveness studies for a variety of potential reach code measures in each energy code cycle. For Truckee's Climate Zone, uh, those studies use statewide average construction costs, PG&E utility rates, and non-local weather files. So while, um, based on the, uh, feedback we received from the stakeholder committee is they felt that this was not very reflective of our local conditions, and so, uh, we did conduct custom studies for some building types to address those issues and, uh, use local cost data, local weather file for Truckee, and our local utility rates. Despite that, there are some limitations of the cost-effective method, cost-effectiveness methodology used, uh, that affect how accurately it represents real-world conditions, some of which are, uh, detailed in the staff reports. And because of that, staff recommends utilizing these studies only as a tool to identify which reach code options are available to the town based on state requirements and not necessarily to interpret them as reflecting the real-world impacts to a particular resident or business. In order to assess those more detailed cost impacts, further research could be conducted in the next phase of policy development, once we have a specific proposal under consideration. It's also important to note that the cost-effectiveness requirement only applies to energy code amendments and does not apply to other types of building code amendments, such as electric readiness or electric vehicle charging. So there were significant delays in the reach code exploration process in 2023 due to a number of factors, primarily a pending court case about the city of Berkeley's ban on natural gas infrastructure and new construction. In 2020, the California Restaurant Association filed a lawsuit challenging Berkeley's, uh, ordinance, which, uh, eventually reached the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. Due to the potential policy impacts of this case on available reach code options, many jurisdictions, including us, uh, paused our reach code process until the outcome was finalized. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals issued a ruling in April 2023 stating that Berkeley's natural gas ban was unlawful because it preempted the Federal Energy Policy and Conservation Act, which grants the federal government the authority to regulate energy standards for certain appliances. So what this means for reach codes is that, uh, direct and indirect prohibitions of natural gas use are no longer considered legal pathways. This affected a lot of the, uh, types of reach codes that were under consideration in the reach code exploration process. So the town can no longer consider requiring all-electric new construction or, um, requiring use of electric equipment in either new or existing buildings. It also created legal uncertainty around so-called electric preferred ordinances, which impose higher energy efficiency standards on buildings with natural gas compared to on all-electric buildings. So the outcome of this process, the, the general legal advice moving forward is to only pursue energy, uh, performance standards that apply a single, the same requirement to both mixed-fuel and all-electric buildings. So that is one of the three categories of reach codes, uh, that were under consideration when the process resumed earlier this year. That's the so-called one-margin energy performance approach. Uh, we also considered electric readiness measures and electric vehicle charging infrastructure Another major change that occurred during this process was updates to the state's Building Standards Code. The state adopted amendments to the California Green Building Code, or CalGreen, that went into effect in July of this year. These increased the electric vehicle charging infrastructure requirements for new multifamily residential and non-residential buildings, both for new construction and retrofits of certain types of non-residential buildings. Given, um, the delays in the reach code process, the state is also now approaching an update to the statewide energy code that occurs every three years. And so the draft language for the 2025 code, uh, which would take effect on January 1st of 2026, includes some significant changes to the requirements for new construction. Uh, the energy code, uh, for 2025 sets a building-level energy performance target for new, or, well, the energy code in general sets a building-level energy performance target for new buildings and allows property owners to choose the design measures they want to include to meet that target. So it doesn't specify a particular path that needs to be taken. It allows any combination of measures that reach that energy performance target, so it's very flexible. And the energy, uh, performance targets included in these 2025 code updates are structured to the extent possible around a highly efficient electric appliance baseline. As I mentioned before, uh, given the outcome of the Ninth Circuit court ruling, uh, all-electric construction cannot be required, but it can be incentivized. And so this is, uh, these code updates make it significantly more difficult, though not impossible, uh, to meet these standards using natural gas equipment. Given the legal constraints on the energy code, staff doesn't believe it's likely there is room to adopt cost-effective above-code amendments for energy performance, given these updates for new construction. And they, all, these updates also expand electric readiness requirements for new construction and certain, uh, non-residential retrofits. And so given these changes, staff believes both energy efficiency and electric readiness have been sufficiently addressed by the statewide code updates and do not recommend pursuing further consideration of new construction reach codes. Other jurisdictions, including South Lake Tahoe, are similarly planning not to pursue new construction reach codes because of these changes. So as part of the reach code process, uh, the town, uh, released a community survey on building energy use and we also conducted three community meetings, some virtual and some in-person. The survey was available in both English and Spanish and received 88 responses, all to the English-language version. Additional community feedback was also gathered, uh, during those community meetings, uh, including the community building decarbonization workshop held this past July. The survey did include some, uh, specific questions about the reach code options under consideration. So, community support for these options, uh, was very low and there were no options that received support from at least 50% of respondents. The most common concerns expressed by the community about reach code options were cost impacts, the sufficiency of the statewide building code to address building decarbonization, particularly with those 2025 updates, uh, dislike for a regulatory approach in general and a preference for incentive-based measures, and a skepticism about environmental benefits of both electric appliances and electric vehicles. Another common concern expressed by respondents elsewhere in the survey was about power outages and concern over use of electric equipment. Staff also collected feedback from the stakeholder committee throughout this process. In 2022, polling was conducted on various reach code options, asking the stakeholder committee members whether they preferred to educate, incentivize, and/or mandate each type of measure under consideration. Staff also conducted informal follow-up polling in 2024 that asked stakeholder committee members to express their level of support for policy options on a scale of one to five, uh, with one being do not investigate further and five being recommend consideration. And the purpose of this second round of polling was to identify any major changes in levels of support from the stakeholder committee, um, after we resumed consideration of the process, um, especially considering that our options had changed because of that Ninth Circuit court ruling. Uh, and also to get more detail about how strongly committee members supported or opposed each measure. This was presented as an informal poll and not intended to create official committee recommendations. Uh, there was low participation, so only about half of the full stakeholder committee, uh, participated in that second poll. So the, the full results of both the 2022 and 2024 polling are included as attachments to the staff report. During the reach code process, there were several developments that affected the options under consideration by the town, as we've said. So there were only three reasons that staff fully removed an option from consideration at any point during this process. First is if the measure was incorporated into the statewide code updates, either in, in the updates that went into effect this year or that will be addressed in the 2025 code updates. Second, if the measure was no longer considered legally viable after the Ninth Circuit court ruling. And third, if the measure did not meet the state's cost-effectiveness requirements. Since the reach code exploration process began before the town and the stakeholder committee had access to all cost-effectiveness results or the custom cost-effectiveness studies, there were some options under consideration by the stakeholder committee that did not end up being cost-effective. Staff, um, then evaluated all of this and made recommendations on which reach code options to, uh, research further. And those recommendations incorporate the stakeholder, uh, committee recommendations, the community support from the survey, cost considerations, and other concerns raised during, uh, this whole process. And with that in mind, these are all the categories of building code amendments that the stakeholder committee considered. Uh, these are very high-level, as you can see. When asked if each type of measure should be the focus of education, incentives, or a mandate in 2022, the stakeholder committee only recommended consideration of a mandate for two categories of policies. First, um, EV charging infrastructure for existing, single-family and existing multifamily residential buildings. When updated polling was conducted in 2024, it seemed that there was higher support for energy reach codes for both new and existing non-residential buildings. Although a majority of the stakeholder committee did not participate in that poll, staff still did revisit these policies and investigate the potential options available to the town. A number of other reach code options were addressed by changes in the statewide code, either with a 2024 intervening code cycle updates or the expected 2025 code updates. So these were removed for consideration, although they had not been, uh, recommended by the stakeholder committee. Based on community and stakeholder input and an analysis of the data on Truckee's existing building stock and permits, staff believe there is a single-family residential upgrade measure that could address community concerns, and we'll discuss that in a minute. And then the remaining reach code options did not have the support of a majority of the stakeholder committee in either 2022 or 2024, so staff did not conduct further investigation of those options. So these are the five categories of reach codes that we will discuss further. We will start with energy reach codes for non-residential new construction. While the stakeholder committee did not recommend pursuing a mandate for this type of measure in 2022, staff did note higher levels of support for the committee in 2024 or follow-up polling and accordingly looked into the available options for this type of code. So this is one where the available options were definitely impacted by the Ninth Circuit court ruling. Uh, as I mentioned before, that took all-electric new construction requirements off the table and requirements for certain electric end uses. There were very, uh, limited options for the town to pursue based on the cost-effectiveness studies done for the 2022 code. And what we're hearing from the statewide codes and standards team is that while they have not completed the cost-effectiveness studies for 2025, they are in the process of, uh, doing those and they're finding few, if any, opportunities for above-code, cost-effective measures for new non-residential construction. This is primarily due to the fact that, uh, the 2025 energy code is already structured to incentivize electrification and energy efficiency to the extent feasible, but certain types of commercial electric equipment are still very expensive and so those measures just don't demonstrate cost-effectiveness. This is also an area where the town doesn't have a, a high number of permits. And so given the limited options, uh, for, uh, possible measures and for different types of commercial uses, we don't anticipate that very many projects would be subject to any adopted reach code, even, even if we could find a cost-effective pathway. So, uh, staff believes this type of measure to be sufficiently addressed by the 2025 code updates and does not recommend further research. Next, we'll look at energy reach codes for retrofits of existing non-residential buildings. This was again, um, not officially recommended for consideration in 2022, but we saw higher support from the stakeholder committee in 2024. The only cost-effective pathways that were identified were electric preferred types of ordinances, uh, which would impose higher efficiency measures only on buildings that include natural gas. And as I mentioned before, that's not a pathway that's legally recommended in the wake of the Ninth Circuit court ruling. Uh, there were no cost-effective fuel-neutral options identified for our climate zone for this type of measure. Uh, the 2025 code updates do include some additional energy efficiency and electric readiness measures for certain types of non-residential retrofit, so there will be some changes with the new code. Uh, but we are not recommending further research of this type of reach code just because there don't seem to be any options for us to pursue. Electric vehicle charging infrastructure for existing, single-family residential, this was one of the two, uh, measures that was recommended by the stakeholder committee in 2022. We did note there was lower support in 2024 and it had very low support in the community survey. It was actually the second lowest-ranked option of all the reach codes. Uh, so we did revisit it, uh, and we looked into our permit data and found that we do see, uh, that residents with EVs are already installing EV charging infrastructure in their homes, including some voluntary EV readiness. That's fairly common when a relevant permit is pulled for like an electrical panel upgrade or electrical work in a garage. And given that potential future EV owners are likely already voluntarily implementing these measures and have an incentive to do so, uh, we think that the primary impact of any mandate would be on residents- mandate would be on residents that don't plan to purchase an EV, that we have concerns about the cost impacts expressed by the Stakeholder Committee, since this is not a measure that is inherently cost-effective. So because there are no greenhouse gas emissions reductions associated with installation of EV charging infrastructure or EV readiness measures in a home that will not have an electric vehicle, we're not recommending pursuit of this measure as a building code amendment. There are incentive-based options that could be pursued if council wants to consider that as part of the next Council Priorities Work Plan, but we think, based on what we're seeing in the permit data, this is something that is already proceeding without much work from the town to incentivize it. The next type of reach code is electric vehicle charging infrastructure in existing multifamily residential. This was the other option that was recommended by the Stakeholder Committee in 2022. Again, we saw lower support in 2024 and very low community support. Given the strong concerns about cost impacts that we heard throughout the reach code exploration process, staff are not recommending pursuing this measure as a mandate. There was equal support from the Stakeholder Committee in 2022 to pursue incentives and a mandate for this measure, so there are certainly incentive options that are available. EV charging infrastructure, like I said, is not, do not have to demonstrate cost effectiveness like energy reach codes, and there's no ongoing energy savings to offset that upfront cost. Because of that, we have, there's a high risk that the costs incurred by property owners to comply with any requirements could be passed on to tenants in renter-occupied multifamily housing. And then owners of condos, which comprise a large share of the total multifamily units in Truckee, likely already have the ability to install EV charging if their unit has a detached garage. We also don't believe that, oops, scrolled too fast. We also don't believe that access to home charging is the primary barrier at this time for renters in terms of adopting electric vehicles, because renters know they will move off in public charging networks, and access to those is a more important factor than access in the place they are living at the current time. And the cost of a new electric vehicle, we believe, is currently more of a barrier than access to home charging. Again, there's no associated greenhouse gas emissions reduction without actual purchase of an EV, and so, given that this measure would increase costs but not directly reduce greenhouse gas emissions, we are recommending pursuing this as an incentive-based measure should council wish to pursue electric vehicle charging in multi-family, existing multifamily residential developments. So that is something that could be included in the next Council Priorities Work Plan. And the last category we looked at is energy reach codes for existing single-family residential. And I do want to acknowledge this was not recommended by a majority of the Stakeholder Committee in 2022 or 2024. An incentive-based approach was more popular, and that will be explored more fully in the existing building decarbonization roadmap that we will bring early next year. However, staff revisited this type of reach code because there was an option, heat pump air conditioning, that we felt addressed community concerns while still offering a high-impact approach to greenhouse gas emissions reduction in existing single-family residential. So staff's recommendations are to further research options to increase the use of heat pump air conditioning in existing single-family residential buildings in Truckee. This would include the following steps. First, develop a proposal for a single-family residential heat pump incentive program, heat pump AC incentive program to fully offset incremental costs, incentivize upsizing of heat pump units to cover a larger share of the heating load, and encourage full system electrification. There are gaps in existing rebate programs that would not necessarily cover heat pump air conditioning, since it does not replace an existing heating unit, and so we want to evaluate that and make sure that we can cover any gaps. Second, to analyze potential policy options for a heat pump air conditioning requirement in Truckee, considering appropriate exemptions and alternative compliance pathways. And three, to integrate heat pump AC training into contractor education programs. So contractor training isn't necessary for a technical perspective, since it's exactly the same as traditional AC installation, but staff recommends providing support for understanding incremental costs and expected impact on utility bills, support for navigating unit sizing options, and considering alternatives like full system electrification, and to educate about any relevant town policies and programs. And this would be applicable, specific to existing single-family homes, since new construction requirements in the 2025 code already require heat pumps to the extent feasible. So what is heat pump air conditioning? This is an emerging focus of building decarbonization policy in California statewide. It's a type of policy that applies to installation of new air conditioning units, requiring or incentivizing installation of a heat pump air conditioning instead of an air conditioning-only unit. It does not in any way regulate furnace replacement, just installation of air conditioning. If a heat pump is installed alongside an existing furnace, it creates a dual-fuel heating system, in which heating is provided by the heat pump down to a certain temperature, at which point the system switches over to the gas furnace. Homeowners could still opt to fully electrify their heating by replacing their existing furnace with a heat pump if desired. However, even if they choose to the dual-fuel pathway, a dual-fuel heat pump still allows the heat pump to displace a significant amount of natural gas use, particularly during the shoulder season and daytime when temperatures are a bit higher. And the sizing and the temperature rating of the heat pump will determine what share of the heating load can be covered and when it will need to switch over to natural gas. So there are a few examples of this type of policy. What heat pump AC requirement was adopted by the city of San Mateo a couple of years ago, and the 2025 California Green Building Code will include language for a heat pump air conditioning requirement in the residential voluntary measures. So heat pumps and air conditioners are essentially the same type of equipment. This is what's very appealing about this type of policy. Both transfer heat from one place to another, rather than generating it through combustion, allowing them to provide heat much more efficiently than a gas furnace. The only difference between the two is that heat pumps have a reversing valve to allow heat transfer in both directions instead of one. Heat pump, so because of these similarities, heat pump air conditioning is a direct analog to central furnace and air conditioner pairs in centrally ducted homes, and that is the most common type of air conditioning we see in Truckee. So there are a number of benefits of heat pump air conditioning that Truckee homeowners could experience. Homeowners would be able to keep their existing gas furnace if they prefer. They'd be in control of the set point to switch between the electric and gas heat, and that would allow them to experience the benefit of heat pump heating with the comfort of having a backup gas furnace, which, based on the community survey responses, it seemed like a significant portion of our community was not quite ready to consider full system electrification. Even if the, or heat pump AC offsets a potentially significant portion of the heating load, reducing natural gas use and associated greenhouse gas emissions without requiring full system electrification. And so because of that, it's a really good interim measure for those homeowners that aren't quite ready to take the step to just have a heat pump. Studies of cold-climate heat pump air conditioning show high satisfaction, significant improvement in comfort and cost savings, even when heat pumps were sized only to cover the cooling load and not the full heating load. So focusing on cooling equipment instead of heating equipment provides us with several benefits, and that's why staff's recommending this measure. First, it addresses community concerns about electrification of heating systems, as it doesn't regulate installation of heating equipment. It is also less impacted by the Ninth Circuit Court ruling, as it's not requiring fuel switching. It also has significantly lower incremental costs compared to full system electrification. So the incremental cost of heat pump AC compared to AC-only is about half the incremental cost compared to full system electrification in most cases. And so that allows, the lower incremental cost means that the same amount of money can fund a larger amount of rebates, and it's a lot easier to make this type of measure cost-neutral. There's also a substantial number of simultaneous furnace and air conditioner replacement permits each year. It's about half of all air conditioning installation. That's that very tall gray bar you see in our average permit valuation. That's a very expensive type of project. And so as you can see, that shows that we could also have some potential opportunity to incentivize full system electrification, as it's actually, in most cases, a lot cheaper than doing simultaneous furnace and AC replacements. And so by focusing on the air conditioning installation, we can have that opportunity to have the situation where a heat pump full system electrification can actually be a cost-saving measure. We also think it's, it provides an opportunity to be higher impact in terms of community-wide greenhouse gas emission reduction. Because we see really low community interest in full electrification, we, this allows us to introduce heat pumps into the community in a dual-fuel situation, and that provides an alternative pathway for those who are not quite ready to take that step to fully electrify their heating. So low existing use of air conditioning in Truckee. We only have about 15% of homes that have air conditioning right now, but we're seeing rapidly increasing demand, and so that's what really presents us with a time-sensitive opportunity to get ahead of this and get heat pumps installed in Truckee's single-family homes instead of AC-only units. Once installed, those air conditioning units are going to have an expected lifetime of about 15 to 20 years, assuming they don't break down early. And so, you know, each one of those AC-only units is really a missed opportunity to have a heat pump in that home instead. So as you can see, the average number of air conditioner installs per year is about 43% of the number of furnace installations, which is pretty high, and we expect that to increase as demand for cooling increases. Currently, we have a fairly low number of heat pumps installed on average each year. These numbers are average annual installations from 2021 to 2023 from our permit data. Given the low community interest in electrifying existing gas furnaces, that would limit the likely impact of policies or programs that incentivize heat pump, like full electrification. So what you see on the right in orange is, assuming that the 18% of survey respondents that said they'd be interested in electrifying their furnace all went through with that, that's the equivalent number of heat pump installations we would see gas-to-electric conversions in a year. So if we focus on air conditioning installations, we would be able to potentially impact a much larger number of homes. There are a number of key considerations that we would need to take into account when researching policy options for heat pump air conditioning. One is the size requirements for heat pumps relative to an AC-only unit. As I am sure everyone in this room is aware, our heating demand is much higher than our cooling demand here in Truckee, and so that does affect the incremental size of the heat pump unit compared to the air conditioner unit. So that's something we will need to look into and evaluate, those incremental costs. Additionally, any heat pump air conditioning requirement would likely need to include an alternative fuel-neutral compliance path, even though it's not a fuel-switching measure. This is just sort of recommended best practice now, just in case, to make sure that there, we're not running into any issues created by the Ninth Circuit Court ruling. The draft CalGreen language for heat pump AC does include an efficiency-based alternative compliance path that staff would analyze in addition to other options. That pathway does not need to be particularly appealing, it just needs to be cost-effective and fuel-neutral. So determining the appropriate exemptions is another key part of this process. These would likely be based on any anticipated differential impacts of installing heat pump air conditioning compared to an AC-only unit. So for example, the CalGreen language for heat pump AC includes an exemption for projects where installation of a heat pump would require an electrical panel upgrade, but installation of AC-only would not. And that's the type of, you can look at similar exemptions for relative equipment size, incremental costs, or any other factors where there would be a difference in installing a heat pump compared to an air conditioner. So the next steps, if council does approve staff recommendations, we would engage a consultant to support the three recommended policy and program initiatives. That would begin with developing an RFP with a goal of having an incentive program proposal ready as early as late winter 2025 and policy options ready by spring. Staff is, are also working on an existing building decarbonization roadmap, as I mentioned, that will examine options aside from building code amendments to address building energy use. Direction received from council on existing building reach codes will be incorporated into the roadmap, and we anticipate bringing a draft of that roadmap to council for feedback in early 2025. In terms of fiscal impact, we anticipate costs of up to $85,000 for the consultant-led incentive program and policy development process. This includes conducting custom cost-effectiveness studies for the 2025 code. These costs could be fully funded by a California Energy Commission grant for building decarbonization planning, though the grant only covers the planning stage and not implementation. So if council decides to move forward with implementation of an incentive program or contractor training programs, that those costs, there would be additional costs for the implementation phase of that, and those would be presented to council with those program details and included in the fiscal year 26 budget request. If council directs staff to research any additional reach code options for the 2025 code cycle, additional funding might be needed. It's going to depend on how much that expands the scope of the cost-effectiveness studies we would need to do and how many different building types we would be looking at, depending on the scope of the reach code options being investigated. That might also require additional staff time to support, and that could have, impact the timeline of items on the current council work plan. And with that, these are staff's recommendations. First, to receive the summary we just provided. Second, to direct staff not to pursue development of a building energy or electric vehicle charging reach code for new construction. Third, to direct staff to engage a consultant to develop a residential heat pump air conditioning incentive program, to analyze potential policy options for a heat pump air conditioning requirement for single-family homes in Truckee, and present recommendations to the town council for consideration, and to integrate heat pump air conditioning training into a contractor education program. And with that, I will be happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much, Erin. There were a lot of subtopics there, and you organized them very well, so thank you for that. Lot of information. We'll begin council questions with Councilmember Klowstad.
I just have one, and it's for the benefit of the community. So you had in your slides that the state energy code has a voluntary heat pump for AC program currently. Do you have any crystal ball predictions on whether, or for existing buildings specifically, because they do mandate it for new construction? Do you have a crystal ball of whether or not they will make this mandatory for existing buildings anytime in their current, future code cycle updates that we can see?
So as best I can see in my crystal ball, what we understand is that for the 2025 code cycle, this will be a, in the CalGreen voluntary measures. We do not anticipate that that will change and be into a mandatory measure for the code cycle that, you know, that takes effect, the 2025 code cycle takes effect in 2026. After that, it's possible, if, I think a lot of that will depend on how many jurisdictions choose to pursue that and adopt that voluntary measure into their code as a reach code. So we have heard a lot of interest. There is a monthly call statewide about reach codes that a lot of jurisdictions participate in, and this is definitely an emerging area of interest, particularly in cooling-dominated climates where air conditioning is typical, but I think it's very applicable to a place like Truckee where we're seeing a significantly and rapidly increasing demand for air conditioning, even though we don't have a lot of it right now.
Thank you. That's all my questions. I have a lot of comments.
Commissioner Romstadt, or not Commissioner, Councilmember Romstadt.
I like Roomstead, too. Do hust. Anyone remember a Rameshine song? Sorry, former DJ. Thank you very much, Erin. That was a lot of great information. So on the two questions, staff is recommending that we would work with a consultant to, if council is interested, to continue in this process. I guess I would ask, you don't feel staff has enough information on this potential program to just start developing a program rather than working with a consultant, again?
So the, part of the next process, we would need to conduct a new round of cost-effectiveness studies, because the code will be updated and we would be adopting this if council decides to move forward. It would be on the timeline for the 2025 code cycle. That is, you know, conducting a cost-effectiveness study is certainly outside the technical expertise of staff, and in terms of developing policy proposals, we would absolutely need technical experts. This, we didn't have development of an incentive program on the current council work plan, but because there's so much overlap between, you know, evaluation of the incremental costs and relative unit sizes, that we feel like it streamlines the process enough that we can kind of sneak that in as far, if we move forward with consideration of policy options and simultaneously develop a two-for-one program, if this is consultant-led. I think it's, we just weren't, that development, trying to do in-house development of an incentive program would have program would have more significant time impacts on staff, and so we might need to see how that could affect other items in the existing work plan. But if we, you know, are doing both, it's a streamlined process with having a consultant. And we would recommend that as a strategy, particularly because we do have that CEC grant funding that we can leverage for that.
And then the timeline, I think, are we talking like March, April, that this would be ready to come back to council? However, it was said, I think, late winter 2025. Are we talking then? Just so I understand the timeline you're looking.
We think if we can get a consultant onboard, you know, early next year, that would certainly be feasible. It will depend on how quickly we can get the RFP out and get responses and get that contract executed. But ideally, yes, the incentive program would be, hopefully, that would be our target, especially so we could include that in our budget.
Thank you. That's it for now.
I just have a few questions. So, in light of the heat projections throughout California, I mean, we're probably at the far end of everything else that's happening across the state, being in the climate zone that we're in. Does staff either have an example of a heat pump policy like this that's been done in Fresno or someplace way hotter, A? And B, do you have any more information on, like, why the state wouldn't just head in this direction within the next five years?
Sure. So, I can only speak to the state's plans for the next code cycle, three-year code cycle. I know there was quite a bit of debate about whether this should be a mandatory measure or a voluntary measure, and there's still a lot of debate among the people involved in making those decisions, but for now, it's settled in that as a voluntary measure. The Cal Green language will apply to all climate zones, so it's written to apply broadly statewide. And because it's included in those voluntary measures, there will be cost-effectiveness studies done by the statewide team for every climate zone. It's an easier policy to adopt in a warmer climate because the bigger, you know, if your cooling load outweighs your heating load, then your heat pump would be determined by your cooling load and not heating. We're a heating-dominated climate, and so it's kind of the opposite for us, where our cooling load at the current time is minimal compared to heating load, and so it's actually a little, it requires a little more evaluation for us to look, because it might require sizing up the heat pump compared to just an air conditioner. And so that's...
And I guess I'm not even interested in that. I guess I'm more interested in if we think the state's going to do this in the next two- to four-year time horizon, you know, does it really make sense for us to do it sooner?
They have not indicated concrete plans to make this mandatory.
Great.
And I think they are waiting to see what individual jurisdictions do, unfortunately. If you're looking for direction from the state, they're kind of looking for direction from us.
I've never heard that before from the staff table, so thank you for that. I guess, so couldn't a program like this, so I feel like we're sort of like tackling the tiniest of tiny things here, and wouldn't a program like this be so much more robust and probably taken advantage of by our community if it was more broad-based and not just reliant on you updating your AC system or a furnace? I mean, we have window upgrades, appliance upgrades, we have all these other things going on. Why are we considering this in isolation and not a much more broad incentive program that hits on so many other opportunities?
Yeah, so this is, we're only looking at this in isolation when it comes to our recommendations for a policy requirement. So, we are not, you know, as part of this item, we're only looking at the building code amendments, and because there is a related incentive program, that's what we're talking about today. But we are looking at incentives much more broadly, and especially because we received direction from the Stakeholder Committee. Most of the feedback we got in 2022 was heavily favoring an incentive-based option. And so all of that will be looked at as part of that existing building decarbonization roadmap. And as you may remember from a previous council item for that California Energy Commission grant, one of the items we wanted, we included in that potential scope of work was development of an equitable funding strategy. So, not just incentive, like rebates, but broader financing strategies to address all aspects of building decarbonization. So, that's definitely something staff is looking at. We are not proposing this as the only incentive program that we would move forward with, and you will hear a lot more about that, the non-building code measures in that roadmap in a month or two.
So, you're asking us for three, or you're recommending three things, I guess, and so I guess what I'm hearing as, with regards to item one, develop a residential heat pump AC incentive program, that could theoretically be tabled to a larger incentive program that has a much broader appeal and could get done within the work plan. You know, should other, should it become a priority in the work plan?
Absolutely. We could, we would probably still, if we are directed to move forward with research for policy options, we would still conduct that study of incremental costs.
I'm going to get to number two second.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess what I'm asking more is just that could sit on its own, it could be a part of something bigger, it doesn't necessarily need to happen here. So, number two is analyze potential policy options for a heat pump AC requirement in Truckee. That's really the policy piece of what you're asking us, because the third one is a contractor education program. We do that all the time. That's pretty easy, that can take place. So, is the crux of this conversation primarily related to number two, and the other two are somewhat ancillary?
We think that they work together as a package, and given that the number-one concern we heard from the Stakeholder Committee and the community during this process was about the cost, we did want to make sure that we, if we were looking into policy options, that we were also analyzing measures that we could use to address any incremental cost that a requirement could result in. And so that's why we included this as, along with that policy mandate, just to be responsive to those community concerns and make sure that we were moving forward with that as quickly as we could. Sort of the bigger the rebate program, the more staff time is required to get that off the ground, and the longer it takes. And so, we could certainly package this into a bigger program and not move forward with it separately, but that would also take more time to do.
I just want to layer on a little bit. One of the reasons you see this approach is that there's an, you know, 80-ish, 100 or so permits for ACs right now. So, offering incentive at this point could help convert those to the heat pump ACs, whereas if we wait and delay it with a package, you're going to miss that opportunity. So, that's where we saw the incentive coming in with regard to your previous question about, you know, windows or couldn't we do other? We're not suggesting that we do a policy reach code for that, so that would be solely incentive-based.
Policy reach code for what?
To do anything, to install a higher-grade window or anything like that. So, this is solely a reach code for the heat pump AC and offering the carrot in advance of that for an incentive program that picks up those that are happening now and hopefully covering the cost, but also preparing people for when, if you choose to go with reach code, it goes into effect, you've given the opportunity to let us help you get there.
Yeah, I get all that. Thank you. I won't ask any further questions. I'll save it for discussion. Thank you.
And Councilmember Henderson.
Me. Thank you. Erin, thank you so much for that presentation. I submitted some questions in advance. I still have a few for you, Erin, and I'm just going to preface my questions by saying that, like Councilmember Klowstad, I have a lot of thoughts that I'd like to discuss when we get to deliberation. So, I'll try to just hold it to just the strict questions at this point. So, out of curiosity, you said 88 community members completed the survey. What was the demographic breakdown of the respondents in that? Professions, homeownership, status, age, et cetera?
I would need a minute to pull that up. It was overwhelmingly Truckee residents, a handful of Truckee business, you know, people who said they both lived and worked in Truckee, and a few people who live near Truckee in the region, but I will have to look up those numbers.
And did we capture professions in that? I know you also had, like, the stakeholder group, and we had some of our, like, cat representation and others, but did we capture professions in the survey as well?
We did not ask for that because it was already very long, but some people did offer that information as part of that, and so we did get responses that included respondents who do not live in Truckee but work in, either as a contractor or as an architect in Truckee, and so offered their opinion in that capacity.
Okay. I'd love to see that. You don't have to dig for it right now. I can circle back with you on it. So, the staff report is saying that a reach code for heat pump AC would still be contemplated by the consultant, and we, so what we're saying is we really need further consideration beyond the two years that we've already sort of embarked upon this reach code process. Is that, that's like number two that Councilmember Polavy was referring to?
Yeah. First and foremost, we need updated cost-effectiveness studies if we want to move forward with anything because the code is changing.
Yeah. Okay. The average permit valuation graphic that you showed during your presentation, just where do those costs come from? Is that just applications that we've received over a specific period of time, or just can you give me some color to that graphic that you were showing earlier?
Sure. So, this is pulled from our permit data, and it is the permit valuation that is entered into our system. I can't speak to how accurate that is in terms of actual project costs, but just in terms of looking at, like, high-level relative costs, this is the average valuation from permits from 2021 through 2023.
Okay. But not actual project costs?
I don't believe that is reconciled after the fact in the permitting process.
Okay.
That's just like an MSRP on a unit.
Right.
Is all that is.
I believe it also includes labor, labor costs as well, but it's an estimate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, can you just tell me a little, so I know number one in the staff report recommendation is to develop a heat pump incentive program, and I would just love a little bit more on sort of the rationale for that specific recommendation. And I'm asking because there are a lot of heat pump incentives in the marketplace, and this is something I want to talk about during deliberation, so full disclosure. So, what evidence do we have that really demonstrates that the incentives are what the challenges that we need to solve for versus a whole host of other things that influence driving consumer adoption of these types of...
Sure. So, one of the reasons, as I mentioned, that we did include incentives is because over and over, the number-one concern we heard during this process is about the incremental cost of any measure. There are gaps in the existing incentive programs for heat pumps in Truckee. So, for example, there's no, Liberty Utilities customers do not have access to a heat pump rebate if they are replacing a gas furnace, and while TDPUD customers do. So, we know there's some differences there. There's also a lot of income-qualified heat pump rebates at the state level. Given that air conditioning is expensive, installing central AC, and it's discretionary, it's still not particularly common, we don't believe that the majority of households that are pursuing air conditioning installation are likely to be low or moderate-income households. It's probably disproportionately higher-income households, and so they would not be able to use those existing income-qualified rebate programs. And some of those, you know, I don't know the specifics on every existing heat pump program, which is one of the things that we would be looked into by a consultant as part of developing that proposal, but some of them do require the replacement of an existing unit, or they, you know, heat pump AC specifically may just, for other reasons, not qualify, that those specific units may not be eligible. And so, we want to make sure that there aren't gaps, that we're not assuming there's an $8,000 rebate available, and it turns out there's none, but we know that there are some, some gaps.
And so, is the intention behind the incentive program just to fill the gap? Because I would, and maybe this is for deliberation, we should talk about this, because I would be hesitant to say we're just going to have this huge incentive when there's other huge funding pots out there through the IRA, through the CEC, through tax credits. Like, I'm getting into deliberation. Let's talk about that in deliberation if we can. So, just sort of planting that seed. And then the other question that I had is related to the contractor training. I'm sure you've been in communication with Sierra Business Council, but I'm curious if you've talked to them specifically about the contractor training that they're going to be offering in the context of the rural ren. That's a little tricky because it's IOU-funded, we're not in IOU-service territory, but partnering with them to scale that training as opposed to trying to lift a whole training and recreate the wheel on our own?
Yes, we have talked with Sierra Business Council because they also currently offer the contractor education program that's part of the Climate Transformation Alliance Building Decarbonization Pilot Program, and they said that it would, you know, they don't, this isn't an area they currently cover, but it would be fairly easy to create additional content if we, you know, provided some funding to develop that curriculum to expand their existing program. And we are proposing, as part of the CEC grant-funded measures as well, to extend their current contractor education for another year and a half. So, it could be incorporated into that expansion.
So, I'd love to say, I'd love to just talk about this in deliberation a little bit more, Mayor, as well, because SBC, at least based on conversations I had with them today, is also planning to launch heat tech qualifying certification to contractors in mid-2025. Heat tech certification is required for contractors to be able to do installs on heat pumps to get the IRA funds through the CEC. Those are the items I'd love to chat more about when we get there.
Okay. Erin, thank you very much, also for answering the questions I posed. Those were complete and helpful answers. I am pretty much going to focus on reach codes as they apply to existing buildings. I'll try to stay away from Truckee weatherization program and from the building decarbonization programs, much as possible, but that could be hard for me to do. I want to start out just understanding some basic concepts on reach codes, and the most basic concept is the requirement for cost effectiveness, which I understand is basically comparing the upfront cost of putting in an energy-efficient measure versus the benefit received. And just looking at the cost for a second, I want to make sure I understand what goes in to that bundle of costs, and we can start with a panel upgrade. If we're doing a heat pump cost-benefit analysis for Truckee, is a panel upgrade included in the cost?
For existing...
Yes.
Buildings? So, existing building cost-effectiveness studies, so I will start out by saying that I am not an expert on the sort of backend calculations on this, so I will answer this to the extent I can, but we do not have a consultant still engaged, unfortunately, to go into too much detail. Existing building cost-effectiveness studies look at building, because every existing building is different, right? And so, they group them into certain categories of building vintages, and they're going to make assumptions about the existing, the typical existing conditions in each of those categories. And so, I don't know specifically what assumptions they're making about the existing electrical panel situation in any of those, but it's quite possible that they are incorporating that in for the older building vintages, assuming a lower electrical panel, but I don't know for sure.
Okay. So, we're taking averages for different vintages. Is that correct in determining whether a certain measure is cost-effective?
I would say they're not so much taking averages as judging against a typical sort of model building for that building vintage and assessing the cost effectiveness compared to that.
So, they're trying to create some kind of median typical building?
I don't know if they're, how they are coming up with those prototypes.
Okay. Let me switch to benefits. How do they measure how much energy is going to be consumed in this typical building?
So, that, there is the same modeling software that's used, going to plug in the existing, the assumptions about that existing condition from that prototype existing building and compare the difference with the particular retrofit measure proposed. But I think what you're getting at is really hitting on the uncertainty in these studies because they are based on assumptions of what's typical in a building of that vintage. And so, there's a lot of assumptions that are, you know, can be highly variable in practice.
Yeah. My concern is even more acute. It's that even if we found a certain measure to be cost-effective for purposes of Energy Commission certification, impose that measure on our community, some people renovating their house who trigger... on our community, some people renovating their house who trigger the obligation to put in a heat pump are going to come out ahead. They're profligate users of energy. They set their thermostat at 80 degrees. They love to use energy. They come out ahead because they use so much energy. So they're going to save more with a more efficient machine. And if I have someone who's miserly, they set their thermostat at 65 or below, financially, they're not going to come out ahead. So the town council is going to be berated by people who lose money on this, saying they were misled. I'm using an extreme example, of course, but I'm expressing a concern. So my concern, it seems, is legitimate.
So I think what the concerns you're expressing are a lot more applicable to the efficiency-based reach codes, the other types of single family measures. So one of the reasons we are recommending a heat pump air conditioning requirement is that it's not focusing the heat, so new air conditioning is inherently not cost effective, right? You're adding a new energy use for the building. And so the, we would likely want to include an alternative compliance pathway, just like the Cal Green language does, that is efficiency based. But this is affecting people who have kind of already signed up to spend more money to use more energy. And so it's not addressing that same issue that you're outlining where there are assumptions built into behavior in occupancy that we talked about a little bit in the staff report as well, that do affect when you look at an efficiency based measure, the actual cost impacts to residents.
Right. I'm thinking of actually a heat pump requirement, and whether that is something we should investigate further, not just the AC heat pump. But I'm trying to understand what costs are included in the CEC reach code and what aren't. And you've answered that question.
So, and I will mention that there were no packages for existing buildings for heat pump measures that were found to be cost effective in Truckee. So that would not be an option we could require in general.
I'm just being a devil's advocate.
Yeah.
I don't think we're going to have the details into the calculations. If that's what you need, then we can get those and bring them back at a later time.
That's the next step.
And that's where, that's where we would really need a consultant to dive into that, that has the technical expertise, because I certainly don't.
And I'm trying, just get a categorical sense. Now, when you talked about reach code measures in your staff report, I got a little bit confused because you said, we're going to call some reach code measures, reach code measures, even though they're not strictly reach codes. I'm thinking of an energy audit or a duct work. I'm not sure. Are you saying duct work is something? Would mandatory duct work requirement require a CEC approval?
So any building code amendment is what we're talking about for reach code. So energy audits would be a program and not part of a building code amendment. But yes, duct work would be part of the energy code measures. So they're, you know, ducting, air sealing, that is all evaluated as part of the energy code.
Okay. But an energy audit is not?
No, that would be a program.
Okay. What about a panel upgrade?
That is not necessarily, because that's not an energy use. So that is something that may be factored into costs. But it's not on its own. That would be electric readiness. So that's just a green building code measure.
Okay. You had some prices on heat pump ACs. And I had looked, and what I saw was comparable, heat pump ACs are about $2,000 more than conventional ACs. And I'm sure it depends on the tonnage and brand and that sort of thing. Is $2,000 within the ballpark?
I would say it's within the ballpark. I think that we really need to evaluate the relative costs. It's going to depend on how much of the heating load that heat pump is sized to cover.
Right. Okay. The staff report says most of Truckee's residential properties are exempt from the photovoltaic requirement due to snow load and or tree shading. I understand how some are. How did we determine that most are?
So it is very dependent to the particular property. It includes roof slope, building orientation. All of that is plugged in. That is just based on conversations with our GIS team.
Okay. Not a real rigorous determination, then?
We would have to plug in the actual data for most homes. But it is based on what we see in the permitting process. It does not apply to a significant percentage of our homes.
Okay. Just because some would be exempt, why wouldn't we have a program for those that aren't?
We can.
I think, Mayor Zabreski, what staff tried to do was take a reasonable amount of effort over the two years, because this was a very long process, and make the recommendation that made the most sense to get the most value on GHG reductions. Did we necessarily go into the details of every single option in terms of how many homes would qualify for solar? No. If that's what you want us to do, that could be part of your deliberation and direction to come back.
Okay. Right now, it sounds like you don't actually have a sense, though, of how much we could save through a solar requirement.
So that, if we're looking, any type of other existing building reach code, looking at all the different pathways would be part of that next phase of research. So I think I did provide some information that standalone above code solar was not cost effective via both an on bill and a time dependent valuation methodology for existing single family homes in general. But if, if that, council wanted to direct staff to investigate other options for existing building retrofits as part of this next phase, we could look at all the options in more detail.
Okay. Well, you've just told me it's not cost effective.
Look, Councilmember Zabreski, I'm just going to try to interrupt because we have a very specific set of policy discussion in front of us tonight. If you have all of these extra questions that are more pertinent to a broader discussion that would warrant a future agenda item, I think the place for that is in deliberation to say, I want to talk about XYZ and A, B, and C, and 1, 2, and 3. All we're really talking about is, are we going to put in place the three recommendations or not? Right? We're not really going to change, we're not adding reach codes, we're not subtracting reach codes, we're taking three things and we're saying yes or no.
I thought we were considering whether we wanted to put other measures in here.
So staff has made the recommendation for the one reach code in the incentive package and giving us direction to go back and do additional consultant support and research on those specific items. If you want to add more, you can. I would suggest that you aren't going to get through that conversation tonight. We probably are not going to be able to answer the questions you have on further ones. This is where we've spent our time in the recommendation. So it might be helpful to go into the public comment and hear from the public and maybe deliberations, and that might focus you in a different direction.
That's fine. I'm almost done. And I was just actually trying to follow up on your questions about broader considerations. Can you, I want to go now to the expenditures. This is my last little area of questioning. Can you explain why this proposed investigation could cost as much as $85,000?
Sure. So a lot of that cost would be, let me pull up that slide, due to contesting custom cost effectiveness studies. So as part of the reach code process we've gone through you so far, we did not actually do our own cost effectiveness studies. We used the ones that the statewide team provided and then gave them local costs and local utility rates to plug into that. So waiting for those cost effectiveness studies to be done was actually a significant part of why our process was so delayed. And so in order to make sure that we have those cost effectiveness studies in hand for specifically the reach code we are proposing, which may or may not be the exact Cal Green residential voluntary language, which is what they will evaluate, we are assuming that we would have to pay for a consultant to fully do, start to finish, fully do that cost effectiveness study on our behalf, which would cost us more than, than what we did in the previous round. So we base this roughly on the costs we've had to date, but it has a wider scope for doing that cost effectiveness study ourselves.
Okay. Do you know, has staff already considered what portion of the $700,000 might be available to fund energy efficiency incentives?
None of that can be used for program implementation. That grant is specific to building decarbonization planning.
Okay. And then, at this point, do you see a need, or can you express an opinion on whether we should be dedicating funding for energy efficiency incentives beyond a year to year expenditures?
So we will evaluate all of our incentive based proposals as part of the existing building decarbonization roadmap.
Okay. You had referred to equitable funding strategy. Is that a direct install program for low income?
No, that's looking at our funding options, including incentives. That's something that we outlined in the council item related to authorizing us to accept that California Energy Commission grant. So obviously, everyone's familiar with rebates. Rebates are, have an equity challenge in that you have to be able to front the money and wait for reimbursement. And there are a lot of other financing strategies that are not necessarily rebate based that we would pursue. So that would really look at that, what Councilmember Poliwe was talking about earlier, in terms of a broader incentive based strategy, and that we could use some of the CEC funds to do that, look at gaps in existing programs, different types of financing strategies, all of that.
Okay. Okay. And then, did you ever look at many splits for mobile homes?
So we did not, we, that would all be something that would be part of the next stage of this process.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Zabreski, I just have one quick follow up question. You were asking about some costs. Aaron, can you just tell us how much we've spent so far on the consultant fees for this analysis, just sort of to date?
Yes. So we, our original contract was for $48,000. It was amended to increase to $83,000 because we added cost effectiveness studies to that scope. And we've spent to date $80,609.50. And that contract did end in July.
So we've spent down that contract. And just to clarify, this would be a request for another $85,000. So we're talking about $170,000 to get to the design for a single electrification measure program? Is that correct?
That would include the cost for development of the incentive program and contractor education programs as well. And that additional funding would be covered by the grant. But yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Questions? Okay. Why don't we go to the public? Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, John Falk, legislative advocate for the Tahoe Sierra Board of Realtors. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. In brief to this issue, we would ask that you really focus on aspire rather than require. Because what you're talking about here is leaning hard over the skis that the state of California is already very, very aggressive towards meeting these objectives of carbon footprint reduction and electrification. And it's clear that, you know, that California leads the nation, for better or for worse, it leads the nation. And I would suggest that, especially the town of Truckee with all of the challenges that it faces, that perhaps it can rely upon the state of California and the aggressive stance that it's taken and the three year updates that it does to help guide you and progress you as you move forward. And in the interim, do offer incentives when incentives are available. But do also recognize that when you bifurcate the costs between individual cost savings for installing energy efficient whatever, or you bifurcate it as to the more global efficiencies that the community gets, right? Those are the two analyses that are done by the cost analyses. Neither of them speak to the cost of the home, which is a cost that is accrued immediately upon upgrade. And so what we're seeing here is that, yes, you will have a benefit over time, but you will have an increase in the, in the average cost of a home immediately upon upgrade. And with the price of homes in the area, I think anything you do should be incentive based. Thank you.
Hello, Mitch Claren. I'm just going to be quick about it. I think it's time to move on and start looking at incentives on existing stock. That's where the real issue is. That's where most of the GHG comes from. That's what we should be working on. Thank you.
They stole my thunder. So Edward Vento, Executive Director of CAT. So I just, I sent a letter earlier today. I know you all got it. First of all, I wanted to say thanks to Aaron. She did a great job facilitating the committee. And the rest of the members of the committee really had a lot to, to kind of impart, you know, in terms of knowledge. I learned a lot. Now, I wanted to be clear that CAT doesn't agree with all the findings in the report. We had some issues with the, with the pricing of the rates. They were during a time we had severe winters. You know, we, we just didn't include that in the letter, you know, with some of the other findings as well, just because it seemed like the point was moot, that reach codes for the town of Truckee were just implausible. They, they're just not plausible at all. As John stated, California is already the most strict state when we're talking about building decarbonization. Another reason we can't find much more savings is because some of the technology just doesn't exist to reach the aspirational goals we're trying to get to, or it's just not cost effective. And finally, it, it seems to me that staff is trying to accommodate council by offering incentives and, and keeping this somehow alive when it seems that it's not plausible to implement. We thought at CAT that, you know, maybe finding a halfway point by saying incentives might be a good idea and going with that would be the best alternative to trying to put, you know, a square peg in a round hole. I think that just the reach codes in this case are just not appropriate for our community. And, you know, I would settle with the voluntary incentives if that's the case. But it seems to me that we're just kind of throwing good money after bad, after listening to some of the questions and conversations. So with that, that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vento.
Hi. Thanks so much for discussing this item. Great presentation. My name is Blake Herschaff. I'm a leading national expert on building decarbonization, licensed mechanical engineer who's designed green buildings around the world. I've worked on climate action plans with a dozen leading cities, so I know the greenhouse gas math very well, unfortunately for me. I live in Tahoe City. We're engaged locally through Electrify Tahoe. So I want to give a shout, I help people electrify their homes and buildings. Shout out to Truckee, who's the only residents who really call me. So your residents are really calling for this. I really support everything here, and I think this is a really good direction that makes a lot of sense and is cost effective for everyone. Two AAC is going to be a big thing that I'm pushing for where I work. I've worked on a lot of reach codes and incentive programs. This is probably my 50th reach code meeting I've been to at a city council, but the first is an advocate. As far as energy efficiency, I love energy efficient buildings and windows. A two AAC is going to be about 20 times the GHG emission savings on that. And I really appreciate that comment. And also thank you for my AVI One course and my Disc Golf discs and everything. But just mathematically, it's just going to be way more cost effective in terms of dollars per ton of GHG emissions saved. So I'd really recommend leaning into the two AAC. I'm probably going to work on 10 of those this fall. I'm really excited. There's definitely going to be cost savings here. Awesome electric rates here. So we just electrified nine whole homes earlier this year. They're all low income. This is at the coast. We fully paid for that. We're seeing $60 per month energy cost savings, which is awesome. That's money they really need in the midst of an affordability crisis. The rates are so much better here. So you really are definitely going to have cost savings on the two AAC measure. As far as incentives, IRA isn't really enough, so in my opinion, for where I work. So we do add incentives to backstop policy for people who are above that median income, but below, let's say, $300,000 a year or something, household, depending on what their mortgage is. We really put those incentives together so that an air conditioner will be the same cost, a heat pump will be the same cost as an air conditioner. So it's really an incentive to backstop the policy. They go hand in hand. I like the idea of give me money, don't tell me what to do. But it hasn't been doing anything. We've been doing that for 50 years. So I really recommend do the two So, I really recommend do the two AAC. Everything here is awesome that they're saying. And I also want to say that there's a fiscal imprudence to inaction. So, without passing a new construction code over the past few years, there's all these new buildings we're going to have to electrify and probably incentivize. That could be half a million in incentives we could have avoided by passing a new construction ordinance in 2019. So, there is some savings there. So, thanks so much for considering this. Have a great night.
Jeff, are there any other public comments? Okay. Are there any follow up questions on the public comment? Are you ready to move into deliberation? Yes, let's do so. Should we start with Councilmember Poliwe? No. Oh, Councilmember Klosstad, let me turn this way.
Look at me. Vice Mayor. Oh, sorry. Okay. I know this has already been a lot and I do, I am going to still take some time here because it's important. It's important, excuse me. This presentation represents two years of hard work by Erin and many others, and I want to first and foremost express my appreciation for that and for the committee members that participated. It was a long and thorough process that did not yield what I was hoping for. So, I'm just going to go right out front and be blunt with that. I feel like we have fallen short of my goals for this community, but I remain optimistic. This committee asked for a lot in this process and staff accommodated all the asks, including custom studies, multiple calculations for cost effectiveness, utilizing local construction costs and local weather patterns. So, I want to point out that none of that is required by the state to present a reach code and get it approved. So, we really went above and beyond, and I want to emphasize that because that is why we have so few choices at this point. But I embrace that because that was the process that I agreed to. So, I want our community to embrace what we're going to do up here because we share in this process. It is clear to me from the surveys and from the conversations that I continue to have with people in the community that there's still a lot of misconceptions about reach codes in general, but most importantly, people still do not understand the dependency on electricity for our heat in our homes and our businesses in Truckee, even with a gas-fired furnace. And we, so we need to do more education on that. And I'd like to work with our partners to try to do a better job there. We just had an update from James this afternoon, and one of his big callouts was be prepared to lose energy, to lose electricity. So, that doesn't mean your gas furnace still runs. It means you don't have heat. And he made that clear. Make sure you have a plan. So, if we, I fear that if we don't talk about this in greater detail with our community and have broader conversations and engage with different community members, that we are going to face the impacts that Joe Smith talked about earlier and many of our other climate champions have raised to our concerns and which is why we have a climate action plan in the first place, which is why this goal even exists because this threat is real. And our opportunities to reduce the impacts of our existing buildings and our future buildings is diminishing with time. So, I'm hopeful, again, ever optimistic, that we have great partners in the room and we have great partners to tap into, other agencies and nonprofits and businesses to have these conversations with and to conduct some better, some more education and a greater In general, even though this is not the conclusion I was hoping for, I am in full support of the staff recommendation and in terms of the, you know, because it is our best path forward and our best, our greatest impact for the effort that we can make. And that's what was hard for me was I just saw time after time through each of these committee meetings, opportunities fall off for one reason or another. This is what's left. And as Blake explained, this is a real great opportunity. We have, this could make a big impact. And I want to talk about how the fact that we are not indenturing people to this. This is a choice. If somebody is going to decide to spend the money to put AC on their home, then we should be able to develop a program that helps them make the better choice to make that a heat pump, two way reversible heat pump that can then offset some of their gas usage. It just makes sense to do this. As Erin's initial slide showed, to make any significant reductions in our community's contribution to our region's greenhouse gases, we have to improve the energy efficiency of existing construction. If we don't do that, we will not make any meaningful progress because we just don't have enough new construction to reach the goals of our efficiency that we have set forth. We have to engage existing construction. And to the reason for this incentive, we don't have to look any further than our own permit records. We are seeing the number of AC units and MEP permits just skyrocket. So, people are doing this. People have the money to do it and they feel like they have the need. And I, I would say we don't have the need so much in temperature yet. It's, that's too narrow. It's the combination of temperature and smoke in our community that requires the need for people to do this or triggers people to want to do that. So, moving forward, I want to just remind my fellow council members, we do have this $700,000 grant that is for planning purposes only. Hiring a consultant for the investigation of this policy and this reach code is a perfect use of this grant. And I understand that there are a lot of other opportunities that are coming forward in our building decarbonization program that I really, really look forward to hearing. And so, with that, I'll stop there. I do have a few more topics that I will bring back after we have a chance to talk about where we want to go with this. So, if I could just put a pin in that, Mayor, come back to me for the next steps about a funding discussion.
Councilmember Romack.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, Councilmember Klosstad, your work, sorry, Vice Mayor Klosstad, Mayor Zabriski on the committee. And Erin, thank you for your work and appreciated you detailing the community outreach on this. I think, again, this shows the Truckee way in action and lots of different opportunities for various groups and folks to get involved. I think, you know, we heard some comments tonight, and I think what a lot of your outreach showed is, you know, more of an appetite for incentives. So, I do see value in that and moving forward with incentive programs. I guess some concerns, just in the comments we were just talking about, you know, I heard the comment of higher income folks are going to be the ones when people are looking to invest in air conditioning. Again, it's a certain type of person that has probably more money to invest. So, I guess there's concerns from me of who is this program? Yes, it will help us meet our greenhouse gas emissions, but are we limiting the amount of people that could be involved? And I think to some of the other questions that were asked, is this too narrow and should we be looking at others? I know I also heard you say if we want to move forward on something, this is an opportunity. But I guess I'm struggling with these thoughts in my head right now. Also, I guess the other thing I'm struggling with is we put in a lot of work, two years of effort and energy and time. We are at this point now, and why I asked about hiring a consultant, and I know you guys do a ton, but it almost feels like, can we just try something? You know, that's, sometimes we do that with some of our incentive programs like THAP, and then we adjust it based on what we see the market doing. So, there's, there's a part of me, I understand we have additional funding, but rather than sometimes continuing to study, should we work on potential incentive, just put something out there? So, curious, some of the other thoughts from my council members. Councilmember Klosstad, you mentioned education. I think education is important. You know, things that have come up before is when folks come in to do something at their house, are they getting any education at our front counter? And I know, again, our staff is working really hard, but ensuring that we're helping educate folks to understand, hey, did you know this program exists? And, hey, did you know CAT has these resources to maybe work with you on a heat pump? So, I also think that's really important that we're considering as we're looking at this program. And then last thought, and then again, I would like to hear from other folks, is the training program. Councilmember Henderson, you highlighted with SBC. You know, I know the more folks that can do all these things and maybe could help be qualified to be eligible for some of the other programs that I'd love to hear about, Councilmember Henderson, that you're aware of, I think is really important. So, to make sure, and I know that's one of the actions, making sure that that education of our contractors is a part of this as well. So, initial thoughts. Love to hear from everybody else.
Councilmember Poliwe.
Thank you. Thanks for all the time and attention that's been put into this by everybody involved. And, you know, I think I just want to start out by saying I really appreciated the public comment. That's the first time I've ever heard that doing a heat pump is 20 times more efficient than redoing all the windows in your house in my six years of being up here. So, it really speaks to, I think what Councilmember Klosstad continues to be a proponent of, and it speaks to the fact that in all of these pages of documents and in this entire staff report, it's so hard to sift through what we're actually trying to accomplish. And a one sentence public comment can help not just change my mind, but help me understand the topic in a much further level of detail. And I want to commend you for that because that, that's truly like, I didn't know that. I'm sitting here and I'm saying it cost me $20,000 to put up, and you've heard this story before, but I'm going to say it again, to put up two awnings so that I could reduce my existing AC use, okay? Took me an HPAK meeting, took me building permits, took me actually two potential sets of building permits. So, when I asked that question in our council member comments and questions, you answered it well for new construction, but you didn't actually get, what I was trying to get across was that this is fine. This has taken 350 staff hours. It's going to cost $180,000. We're going to spend another $180,000. I fully agree with public commenter. If we require something that we don't have to, now that we don't have to incentivize it next year, that's like, okay, I can understand all that. Show me the math on how all of that works, and I don't need a 50 page staff report to walk me through what all that means. I want to make common sense decisions that shape our policy, that help us move forward so that, you're right, we don't have to have this, an incentive to get the person who's going to install a furnace this summer and not do a two sided heat pump but has enough money to do it. And so, two years from now, because they can get a $10,000 rebate, then they're going to go do it. That I get. Help me get there in a much more cost efficient way that doesn't cost 350 hours of staff time, $180,000 of studies, and is going to be adopted by 1% of our, less than 1% of our community who can afford what they're actually doing. That's the part I don't get. Get me there and I can support any of this stuff. Seriously. I think that's all I have to say. I don't know what else to say.
Councilmember Henderson.
Okay. I was like, wait, I thought you were still going. Okay. So, I am certainly interested in policy options that we can choose from. That said, I'm also, I am very concerned that this will have cost us $170,000 just to get to the policy options for a single electrification measure. I'm certainly glad that we have grant dollars from the California Energy Commission. Thank you to them. But I want us to be really cognizant of the types of investments and what this actually takes. I'm going to reiterate what I said earlier on is that we really need to solve for the right problem. So often, just like as human beings, we want to jump into problem solving mode, which I generally love, but when we don't take the time to actually identify and understand what the challenge or the problem is, then you waste resources on a solution that aren't addressing the problem. I'm not confident that incentive levels alone are the only or even the primary problem that we need to solve for. So, there are so many other challenges to actually get consumers to adopt heat pumps, this one specific measure. So, like I said, there are no heat tech qualified contractors in Truckee. There's confusion in the marketplace. This is really, really hard for consumers to navigate, not just going through permitting and everything that we require as a community, but all of the incentives that do exist. I'm going to touch on that in a minute. I work in this industry. I installed a heat pump in my home four and a half years ago. It cost me $8,000 to install that heat pump, which I did at the same time that my furnace failed. So, I did a furnace and a heat pump to get the AC benefit. And it was really, really challenging, right? And I work in this space every single day. Contractors might not be interested in participating if there aren't incentives for them or if this isn't a new revenue stream that makes sense to their line of business. So, again, I say this because if we're not focused on what are the problems we actually need to solve for, then we're just going to throw money at something and might not actually see the results that we want to see. So, I think that really needs to be figured out. Okay, I mentioned the different heat pump incentives, and Erin, you talked a lot about these. I just want to dive down a little bit more because, again, I don't want us to spend resources on incentives if those funding pots already exist. I'd be comfortable potentially with some of those like stopgap and bridging funds if we need those. And of course, there's financing and other options as well. But through the Inflation Reduction Act, there are incentives for heat pumps, $4,000 for those who fall between 80 to 150% AMI, $8,000 for those who are below 80% AMI. That program has been launched by the California Energy Commission or CEC. Again, right now, to qualify for those rebates, you have to have a heat tech qualified installer to install the rebate. We don't have a single heat tech qualified installer in Truckee. There are them, there are some in Reno, Grass Valley, Sacramento, and Auburn. Those are the closest. So, could we, for example, work with CAT to support contractors in becoming heat tech qualified? That might be a big barrier to participation in getting those rebates for consumers who live right here in Truckee. Again, it's what is the problem? There's the 25C tax credit. That's eligible for the 30% of the cost, including up to labor, up to 2,000 annual max for heat pumps for an existing home, a retrofit. Liberty Utilities, Erin, you mentioned this, they have retrofits and new construction if it exceeds the current California code. The Public Utility District right here, our Truckee Donner PUD, has heat pump rebates tiered based upon the seasonal energy efficiency ratio, SEER, or the heating seasonal performance factor. TDPUD also has panel upgrade rebates available. There are tax credits for replacement of panel boards and sub panels. So, again, I don't feel comfortable just saying, yes, let's just develop an incentive program when there are so many incentives out there and we don't actually know what we're trying to solve for right now. That doesn't feel great. I don't think we would do that, for example, with a capital improvement project. We wouldn't say, let's just throw $2 million at this. Oh, but there might actually be like state grant dollars out there. We would go after the state grant dollars first. On the training, I spoke with Steve Fritsch, the Executive Director of Sierra Business Council today. The Rural Regional Energy Network, or REN, is launching their heat tech qualifying training for contractors in mid 2025. That's through the work of the Rural REN. Again, that REN is tied to IOU, Investor Owned Utility Funding. We are not in an IOU territory, but instead of, for example, I think the recommendation was develop contractor training. I don't think we should be developing something whole cloth. contractor training. I, I don't think we should be developing something whole cloth. We should be working with people who are already doing that work to expand that work to folks who actually are in Truckee, to contractors in Truckee, qualify them, create new business for contractors here, make it easier for homeowners, for example, to access those $4,000 to $8,000 rebates through the California Energy Commission. So those are, those are some thoughts. I have other thoughts if we're going to go into sort of reach code and just questions that I'd want to see considered. But I'm going to pause there because that's a lot.
Okay, I support every word of staff's recommendation. I realize, looking at it, that it is couched within the context of the weatherization program and the building decarbonization program. And I'm looking forward to shifting focus, partly, largely, to that building decarbonization program, getting things in the right order. I noticed on the CTA website, they talked about, gee, you want to do weatherization first. Figure out how you seal and your ducts and your envelope and just prevent the loss of energy, heat, right out of your home. And then start looking at your energy budget. I subscribe to that notion. It all makes sense and follows. What we've done here in that context is kind of brave. You're saying, let's go ahead and look at this AC heat pump right away. We can proceed. We feel confident enough about it. You've spotted a place where we can proceed, and we will learn as we go. That's part of it. We're going to gather data. We're going to get better confidence about what the costs and benefits are, and we can expand into other kinds of heat pumps later. I really see this as just being a first step. We get it in the door. I think you've done a great job in picking the lowest hanging fruit to get us going on something that approximates a reach code. I noticed you talked about an incentive program, but you're also looking at potential policy options. And in the staff report, it says the goal would be to incentivize and/or require heat pumps be installed of AC-only units. Yeah, let's keep that option open. If it proves that they are truly cost-effective, and we're not fudging with the numbers, or could be accused of fudging with the numbers, let's keep that option open. Let's try incentive, but be ready to go to actual requirements. That's the way I look at it now. My one reservation on reach codes across the board is it's taking averages. So it doesn't mean that every individual homeowner is actually going to benefit from the program. And so I'm uneasy about that part. And understand, we're not talking about new construction. Talking about existing buildings, and the state has looked at us, and while the state is doing so much, we, we've already seen when we did the Climate Action Plan, the state expects local jurisdictions to account for about 45% of the GHG reductions. And so what we're doing is part of the responsibility we've assumed. Okay, so who wants to start over?
Well, thank, I think that's a great place to put an exclamation point. We're, this is, the intention here is that we're doing our part. I, I want to just clarify, or have staff clarify. So we spent $80,000. That was for our, our cap goal that we agreed we would do when we adopted our Climate Action Plan. And now we're talking about another $80,000. So it's 160 total, right? We're not doing that twice, just to confirm. Right. And that second $80,000 is, is already accounted for in this grant, this $700,000 grant.
Correct.
And, um, thank you. I just wanted to, to make sure we were clear on that, that we're not talking about doing yet another $160,000. This next step is, is essentially paid for. I also want to make sure that we're clear on what our task was here. It's, I feel like we're getting a little bit, we're, we're crossing over into the building decarbonization discussion way too often here. And it's hard because we haven't heard that yet, and all of our brains want to go there. So I understand why that's happening, but our task here was very, very specific. Reach codes, which mean based on the energy code, the state mandated energy code, and whether or not we're going to exceed that. And all we're talking about here is, of course, we're going to, in any incentive program, staff is, town staff is better at this than any other public agencies I've ever seen. They always find all the grants, all the opportunities on our capital projects. I have all the confidence in the world that at this next step, when you bring forward a proposed policy for an incentive program, you will have researched and accounted for all those other possible incentives. And the point here being is for us to find a way to bridge those gaps or to create equity in some lower-income areas. We're not going to, I, I never, at least, maybe I just need to get clarification from staff. It was never, oh, we're just going to go buy everybody heat pumps regardless of their income level and whether they need them or not. That, that's not what we're doing here. We're, we're talking about putting together a strategic policy that's going to support this very specific goal of trying to end the addition of an additional electric load onto existing buildings beyond what we already are seeing in our greenhouse gas emissions reportings. We're talking about trying to convert that to a much more efficient system that could have the additional benefit of offsetting some greenhouse gas emissions from one of our biggest contributors, which is natural gas. So this is a very, very narrow scope. And I, and I apologize, Councilmember Henderson, perhaps you would have been a better partner on this committee than I was, is you are, you are very, very deep in this. And I know you understand it even better than any of us up here. So you're probably frustrated coming in at the end of this process, but it, it was, it was two years of kind of the peeling off the layers of the onion, and, and each of those opportunities falling to the wayside. Or what I kept trying to tell myself is, that's going in the, the building decarbonization program bucket that we're going to talk about later. So I, I just wanted to have the, those discussions and, and that clarity. And then I think maybe to, to your point, Dave, thank you for being so blunt. Of course, you are about what you need to get there. And, and thank you, Mr. Hershaf, for getting this clear point across is the impact that we're talking about having here. Heat pumps can have a huge impact on our existing building efficiency. And yeah, it's going to be a very small number of our population that utilizes this. We're, we're already agreeing to that. It's, it's just the people that are choosing to add AC. But if we don't do this now, like he said, we are going to be trying to convert those for decades into the future. Right now, we've got 50, 60, 100 of these being added every year, somewhere in that range. And those are just more units that we're going to need to replace in the future. And yeah, how many, how many people did our, did our initial housing programs, our initial list of locals program, or our initial THAP program, how many, what percentage of our population did those serve? A very, very small percent. But it was still a really important step to take. And we built on that. That was, those were, those were stepping stones for us to build up this incredibly robust and successful workforce housing program that we have. That's what we need to start doing on our other, other council goal of reduce, of being a leader in environmental protection and reducing greenhouse gases. And that's what this policy will do.
Okay, I think we're all providing a lot of direction. And what I'd kind of like to do is bring us back to the recommendation. I, I think we have the votes. Are we ready for a motion, or does someone else want to?
I think asking for a motion and see if you get that based on the recommendation or some other iteration of that would be best.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, I would like to move that we direct staff to engage a consultant to develop residential heat pump air conditioning incentive program, analyze potential policy options, and integrate heat pump air conditioning training for contractors.
So essentially, this staff's recommended action. Okay, do I have a second?
Could I slightly amend your motion?
You can certainly shout it out. Let's see what you got.
So could we direct staff to analyze potential policy options? So sort of number two here. Direct staff to partner with SBC and CAT to enhance and increase the reach of contractor training as opposed to developing it from scratch? So it's just a bit of a change in terms of how we're actually doing that. And to develop options for incentive and financing programs and packages?
Oh, I think that the next step is for them to come and give us another presentation on the options for.
I just, I wanted the financing piece sort of specifically included, not just incentives. And it's contractor and consumer incentives.
And I think Mike, I do have another amendment to that, too. And that is, that is that staff also begin considering the funding that will be needed to, to
Implement?
Create, to implement a successful program
Here.
in our next budget update. Not this year's, obviously, but in our next budget update.
So I'll second with all those amendments.
Maybe, can we repeat what we think are the amendments?
One was consult with SBC on the
Partner with SBC and CAT to enhance and increase the reach of contractor training?
Okay, number C, 3C?
Yes.
Consult with SBC on contractor.
Partner.
I'm fine with consult. Partner, just being a lawyer.
We don't have, we can't force them to partner with us.
I think that there is likely interest based on some preliminary conversations I've had, however you want to wordsmith it.
Thank you. Okay. And then the others, consult. So consult with SBC on, and it's on 3C, integrating heat pump air conditioning training into contractor education programs.
SBC and CAT.
Oh, and CAT? No, definitely just consult. Yeah. And then, and then the financing options goes into where we're talking about options, analyze potential policy and financing options?
No, in A.
In A, develop a residential heat pump.
Develop options for incentive and financing.
And develop options for financing.
I think we get the nature of what you're talking about. Let's go with that.
And fund it.
And consider the funding needed. With those, okay, with those amendments, would you renew your motion?
I so move, as stated.
I so second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Why don't we take a five-minute break? Okay, we'll recess for five minutes.
SB nine required that these subdivisions happen. Oh, I didn't even hit the thank you goodness. Really has been a while. Um, why does that look funny? Um, you may recall in 2021, um, we saw this new process of creating four units on an underlying lot. Um, some of the key points to understand it, it has to be through a ministerial process. So there's no decision maker, um, involvement in approval of these projects. It happens all at the staff level. We were allowed at that time to create objective design standards that would be specific to approval of these lot splits. So things like setbacks, height limitations, size of units, et cetera. And it really granted cities and counties pretty broad, um, allowances for creating these objective standards, except that there was a sort of a minimum standard that needed to be met, which was the four units and having units 800 square feet as a minimum. And back then, um, because of when the ordinance or when the law was put into place at the state level, we had to do this through adoption of an urgency ordinance. That same process has happened again. This was adopted in mid-September and due to the cancellations of a couple of meetings, we really don't have enough time to get our laws in place. So fast forward three years, um, I noted that the state has been really dissatisfied with the outcome of SB nine, um, really across the state. And SB four five zero was adopted. And what happens there is the state has removed, um, virtually all of our discretion in allowing objective design standards that are unique to an SB nine unit. And, um, really what has happened now is that we've been told that the underlying zone standards for single-family zoning are what we have to apply to SB nine units. Um, and then again, I mentioned the chief building official was previously given some discretion to deny an application either on the basis of an impact to a physical and adverse physical impact on the environment or related to health and safety. And now the, the health and safety aspect is the only one that remains as part of his discretion. So I'm, I'm very quickly going to go over this. It's really simple to think about the, the box that you're allowed to have with an SB nine project and how that has changed. Um, previously we had some height standards and size limits and, um, four-foot setbacks, which are mandated by state law for these units. What has happened now, as I mentioned, is the, the height that you're allowed to have a house, you're now allowed to have for an SB nine project. So really the footprint of your height limit that's created by your setback limits, if you envision that box, that is what someone is allowed to develop on their property at this point. And, um, something to note, the state actually requires that we allow up to a four-foot setback if, if needed by a property owner. And so that is actually six feet beyond our typical 10-foot setback for a, a typical single-family lot in Truckee. So that even expands beyond, um, that sort of box that you may have in your mind with a 35-foot height limit and 10-foot side setbacks. That's even substantially larger than what we would typically allow. Um, so to address a concern related to snowshed, in particular, snow shedding across a property line, which would invariably happen with a four-foot setback, um, we have included a objective design standard of a flat roof for all sections of the structure that would be located within four to 10 feet of someone's property. So, um, we believe that that's supportable. Um, it's objective. We actually specify the actual pitch in the code, so there's no question. Um, and that's really our only way of addressing that safety concern that would result from a structure being so close and 35 feet tall. Um, so again, the, the rules have changed pretty drastically as it relates to SB nine. Um, and then I mentioned that the chief building official was previously granted some, uh, discretion in SB nine that has, um, mostly come out. It can really only at this point be related to a health and safety issue. And there needs to be, um, the, our favorite term in, in planning legally is substantial evidence would need to be in the record for our chief building official to actually deny a project. And I'm going to move it over to Jamie. She's going to run through the changes on SB 1211.
Not sure how close I need to be to the microphone.
Good evening. Um, so SB 1211, um, was proposing four primary changes to ADU legislation. Um, the first one is regarding multifamily ADUs. It established a definition of living space because in multifamily structures, um, portions that are not used as livable space may be converted to an attached ADU. So, um, it added a definition specifying what living spaces, uh, space in a dwelling intended for human habitation, including living, sleeping, eating, cooking, or sanitation. And so we're proposing that the development code take that exact definition, um, and put it into our ADU section for clarity. Um, the second change is regarding multifamily detached ADUs and increasing the number of units allowed. So currently multifamily lots, um, are allowed for two detached ADUs, whether it's existing or proposed multifamily. Uh, this legislation allows for up to eight detached ADUs on existing multifamily lots, not to exceed the number of multifamily units that already exist. Um, so if you have five, you can create five. If you have 16, you can add eight. Um, and there are no changes to the number allowed with proposed multifamily. Um, and so we're just proposing to incorporate those exact changes into our development code. We're not proposing additional. Uh, the third change here is, um, adding a parking replacement exemption. So currently when a garage, carport, or covered parking structure is demolished to construct an ADU or is converted to an ADU, we cannot require replacement parking. Um, this legislation now also states that uncovered or surface parking must also be exempt. So for example, if you had a multifamily property, you could take those surface parking spaces out and add new detached ADUs. Um, we don't have an option about this. I added some nice pictures of snow-covered parking cars, um, because that is an issue that we have in Truckee and we don't allow for street parking. So, so far, most of our multifamily developers and property owners have acknowledged the fact that they need to provide onsite parking for their, um, units. So we haven't seen this be a huge, um, desire for multifamily detached ADUs, but here we go. Um, so our development code will, um, incorporate that exemption. And then lastly, the fourth change, um, limits objective design standards for most ADUs. So currently we can have objective design standards, which we do have, not a lot, but we do have some. Um, and this legislation specifically states that there are four types of ADUs that we cannot impose any objective design standards on unless it's specifically within the state law already. Um, so essentially we will only be able to apply zoning standards for the number of ADUs allowed, setbacks, height. There are a couple other minor things, but those are the primary things. Um, building and fire codes, we can still apply for safety reasons. Um, and this applies to single-family conversion ADUs and junior ADUs within existing permitted spaces, single-family detached ADUs that are up to 800 square feet and up to 16 feet in height, and then all of the multifamily ADUs. We are not proposing any changes at this time because we're working with legal counsel to determine exactly what we can and can't change and, um, and how best to implement that. So that's where we're at at this point.
Okay, I'm going to run through this pretty quickly. I think you all have done this enough times. Um, this is an urgency ordinance for your consideration. What that means is that the four out of five of you, in order to put this into place, would need to vote tonight to adopt. Um, what this does is, uh, it bypasses all our traditional ways that we go about adopting ordinances, which means planning, commission review, and two times in front of the council. None of that will happen as it's proposed. And we're doing that again to meet the January first, 2025, um, law that goes into effect for both of these. If we don't, um, our ordinances will both be out of compliance with state law. Um, it'll go into effect as soon as you make a motion for it of the five of you, um, but we won't actually implement this until it's state law in January. This is all tied and urgency ordinance is tied to, you know, preservation of health and safety. It's even public peace. Um, and, and really that relates to us having codes that wouldn't be in compliance with state law and the challenges that result from that. Um, our current standards don't comply, as we mentioned. We do need to modify our codes in, um, both related to SB nine and ADU projects. Um, and you certainly could direct us to do a more thorough outreach process, though arguably the discretion, um, really isn't there that we would typically be looking from for, from the commission and the council. So, um, we believe it's appropriate to consider this through adoption of an urgency ordinance. Um, that's our recommendation tonight. You've got all your SEQA exemptions, both statutory ones and regular ones. I won't run through them all. We've kind of tripled up on this and, um, our recommendation is that you approve these code amendments pursuant to state law.
Questions on my right? Questions on my left?
I just have more of a policy implication question. I understand what the task is before us. But this is pretty like challenging.
Yes. It's very challenging. Yes. In terms of-
How this is going to get implemented in a community without on-street parking, without even parking, uh, I mean, basically we're, somebody can come in on a number of different parcels and have no parking requirements whatsoever.
Yeah.
Especially if they utilize a density bonus and all the other tools.
You are correct.
This is just, um, a, a great example of how the state is passing legislation to address housing that's not specific to areas. It's just a broad swipe. So this would be something that we would work with, um, Emmanuel Jones and trying to get some exceptions built in, but we have to implement it or the recommendation is to implement it for the next round.
I was just making sure I understood it correctly. Okay.
Is there a practical implication of removing the authority of the CBO to deny an application because of physical impacts to the environment?
A practical application?
Yeah, here in Truckee, I'm trying to think of what the physical damage would be other than erosion. I mean, if a house fills virtually the entire lot, there's going to be a lot of runoff, but what else would?
Um, that's certainly one of them. Snow storage, proper drainage, yeah, all of those could be impacted, um, but they're kind of off the table at this point, unless we can create an argument related to safety and an impact from erosion or-
We can on West Read. We've got the record to prove it.
No more questions. Uh, let's move in, oh, public comment? Anyone want to, no. The deliberation, any deliberation here on the right, on the left?
This, this is incredibly unsatisfying to take our own authority away, but, um, yeah, I get it. So I'll, I'll move that we adopt urgency ordinance 2024-10.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, passes unanimously. Thank you, Hillary, you're up.
Um, and as Hillary is pulling that up, I do think Shelin Rodriguez is available on Zoom. So if there's any questions for her regarding the recommendation to reallocate for Pacific Crest Commons, um, Shelin is, I think I can, can't quite see that far away, but I'm pretty sure that's her name up there. So good, um, she would be available.
Thank you, Jen, for that introduction. Um, the purpose of our hearing tonight is for council to consider changes to the town's permanent local housing allocation or PLHA plan. Um, PLHA funding is a five-year grant from California Department of Housing and Community Development to support housing. Um, as addressed in, in the staff report, and we'll, we'll get into this in a summary, um, there are a number of restrictions on how funds can be used that are informing staff's recommendation on allocation of these funds. The town's, uh, current PLHA plan, which was adopted in 2020, allocates all of the town's PLHA funds, which is 632,000, um, for ADU low-interest loan programs. This ADU loan program was launched in 2020 with two loan options. There's a $50,000 10-year loan at 2% interest rate, which requires a 10-year deed restriction that puts restrictions, um, requiring that the ADU be rented to a household at or below 60% AMI. And then there's a $50,000 15-year loan at 3% interest rate with a 15-year deed restriction requiring rental to a household below 120 AMI. Well, the town has had a handful of property owners, I believe five, interested in this program. We've not had anyone actually use it yet in the, over four years that we've had this program available. And we actually have had, um, no interest in the 60% AMI option at all. Um, feedback we've received is that a $50,000 loan, well, that's a significant amount of money, um, only funds about 10% of the cost of constructing a standalone ADU and that this is not a significant enough incentive for participants to sign on to a deed restriction. Additionally, broadly speaking, um, put, putting together, financing for any ADU construction is a significant challenge. And even when layered with our separate $50,000 forgivable loan incentive program, this, there's still a significant funding gap for projects to move forward. So we hear a lot about the financing challenges for ADUs across the board. Because we've been unsuccessful at spending these funds as currently allocated, um, we're bringing our PLHA plan back to council for reconsideration because we, ultimately, we'd really like to use these funds and not return them to the state. In considering the town's options, um, for our PLHA plan amendments, the town identified the following programmatic requirements that limit our range of options for program amendments. The town has already received $286,375 of our PLHA funds and, um, through conversations with HCD, we have determined that those funds we've already received cannot be reallocated to a different project. So the only thing we can spend them on is ADU low-interest loans. We can, however, make adjustments to our loan program. And then of the remaining funds, at least 40% must be used for projects that fund owner-occupied workforce housing under 120% AMI. And the remaining funds could be used for projects that provide rental or ownership housing support. Um, that's all capped at 120 AMI and a portion of funds must be used to support, um, housing for households earning no more than 60% AMI. With these constraints in mind, um, staff are recommending that the funds, um, funding plan be revised to include three projects. The first would be allocating the 286,375 amount that we've already received to ADU loans, um, but revising the loan program guidelines. The second, um, project we're recommending is a deferred low-interest loan for affordable housing development with a recommended amount of just over $207,000. Um, that's 60% of the remaining funds, so that's the maximum amount we could allocate to something other than ownership. And the third project we're recommending is a new down payment assistance low-interest loan program for home buyers, um, with a recommended funding amount of the balance, which is 138,480. Um, tonight's hearing is to approve the PLHA plan, which is summarized here. Um, staff, um, would then submit the application to HCD for these amendments. Um, and while we don't have detailed program guidelines for each of these programs developed at this point, we wanted to bring this to council first. I also wanted to take just a couple minutes to provide a bit more information on each of these recommended programs and next steps on each of those. So for the ADU program, um, again, some of the feedback that we've received is that the amount just isn't enough to justify a deed restriction. To address this, staff are recommending that council direct staff to make changes to the program to help make the program more appealing. Specifically, we're recommending replacing the $50,000 loan programs with two revised options. One is a $200,000 loan amount, so a much larger amount for the 60% AMI, um, category. That would be a 20-year loan at 1% interest rate. So lower the interest rate, extend the loan term to allow longer time for payback and, um, shortening the deed restriction amount to seven years. Um, and that again would have to be rented to a household at or below 60% AMI. The second option would be a $70,000 10-year loan at 2% with a 10-year deed restriction. So that's lowered from 15 years of the current deed restriction and that would be required to be rented to a household at or below 120% AMI. So we're looking for council direction tonight on whether to make these changes and if directed to do so, we'll bring back revised program guidelines for council approval in early 2025.
Questions, council member Paul ofy.
A couple more to go.
Oh, you're not done.
We're not quite done. That was the first program. Um, I appreciate your, um, your eagerness to keep it moving. Um, the second, uh, proposed project is a deferred low-interest loan, um, for affordable housing development. Concurrent with staff's consideration of changes to the PLHA plan, we received a time-sensitive request from Pacific Crest Commons, um, for additional match funding to get that project across the finish line. Um, this project, as you may recall, is, um, located at what we refer to as the old CHP site, the corner of Highway 89 and Donner Pass Road, has 55 affordable multifamily housing, um, units. Um, the project applied for, um, 4% tax credit funding. We anticipate that these funds will be awarded tomorrow, so that is, um, very exciting. Um, they still have a funding gap for the project. Um, so they've come to the town and other partners trying to fill that gap. Um, in 2022, the town committed a million dollars of match funding to this project, um, which was used as a match for the local government matching grant or LGMG award. The project has recently submitted a request to HCD for an additional amount of LGMG funding, but in order to receive those funds, they require additional local match funding. Um, so, um, the regional housing authority has already, um, committed to three, uh, $300,000. Staff's recommendation is to commit 207, 277, which is again, the maximum amount that we could reallocate to this from PLHA. And then our understanding is that, um, the Nevada County Housing Ad hoc Committee is recommending to the Board of Supervisors that they match the town's funding commitment. That will be discussed at the Board of Supervisors, uh, meeting in January. So they have not officially awarded those funds yet, um, but they are supporting that recommendation. So again, staff's recommendation is to allocate that amount of PLHA funds in addition to the million the town has already committed. And Shelin is available to help answer any questions we may have about that. And then the final program that we are proposing is, um, a new down payment assistance low-interest loan program based on PLHA program requirements. Um, this would be capped at 120 AMI. It would be structured as a low-interest loan so that it could, um, be layered with THAP. It could potentially also be layered with MARTIS fund, um, to help get, um, households at a lower end of the spectrum into homeownership. So we're looking for council direction tonight on whether to include this in the PLHA plan. Um, if, if we are directed to do so, staff would spend time developing program guidelines for this program, um, and then we would bring those back to council in early 2025. So here's a summary of the next steps for each of those programs that we discussed. And we would start by submitting the revised plan to HCD after we get council direction on what is included in that. And here's a summary of our recommended actions, um, to adopt Resolution 2024-74, which would approve the updated permanent local housing allocation plan and authorizing the town manager to submit that application to HCD. Now I'm ready for any council questions.
Apologies for interrupting you, Hillary. Um, and thank you for the presentation. Um, council member Paul ofy, had, save up any questions?
Yeah, just one quick one. Uh, what happens at the end of the deed restriction on the ADU program? Does it revert back to market rates? And then, um, but still has requirements of an ADU, basically?
Correct. So after the deed restriction is over, there would be no restriction on who it would be rented to or who would occupy it. Um, as council will recall, it could not be short-term rented.
Right. Okay, that was my only question. And I, I mean, I guess, uh, I, I was one who asked that question and council questions like, where'd you come up with this? And the response was, well, here are the three levers and you just sort of picked at them?
Yeah, we just said, let's sort of reduce all of them.
Okay.
Uh, 10 and 15 years sounded psychologically sort of, sort of a barrier. So we said seven sounds a little bit friendlier of a time somebody could commit to.
I didn't know if there's a science or anything else behind it. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Council member Close Todd.
No questions.
Council member Romak.
Um, so the revised ADU would be proposing to just do two ADUs, one at the 200,000 and one at 70,000. And, okay, confirmation, head shake. I guess the question is, again, staff time developing program guidelines for two ADUs. Would we anticipate if we found success in this program, we would look to adding our own funds or something like that or?
We could potentially do that. In this case, we actually already have program guidelines, so these, this would be a pretty minor effort to amend those and then we just need to submit them, um, for approval to HCD.
Great.
Um, we do anticipate additional rounds of PLHA funding. So if this is successful, this could be something we recommend for the next round.
And then on the 138,000 recommended for down payment assistance, similar question. Uh, that doesn't seem like that would be a lot of money to help a lot of different homes. So do we already have a program in place that we can use those guidelines?
We do not have a program exactly like this in place. Um, it would likely fund two home purchases. Um, staff are recommending this, seeing this as a pilot opportunity and something we may want to continue either with PLHA or local funding sources, um, if successful.
Great, thank you.
Council member Henderson.
Thank you. Um, why, how did we get to the recommendation for the split on the PLHA funds and kind of following up on council member Romak? If 137,000 is only going to get us potentially two home purchases, why wouldn't we put more to the down payment assistance low-interest loan program that we're talking about as an example?
We cannot move the funding from, um, ADU to the low-interest loan or to the down payment assistance program, um, because it's already been allocated to us just for ADUs. Um, so I suppose that we could not fund the affordable housing project and put it more into the bucket of the down payment assistance. Um, staff were, we're trying to figure out creative ways to accommodate this request to help get the Pacific Crest Commons project across the finish line.
How much in funding did the developer ask for in this most recent round? Not what we're legally allowed to do, the 207,000 and change. How much did they ask for?
Uh, they asked for as much as we contribute. At one point, we, we were seeing if we could potentially allocate up to 500,000, um, from PLHA, which we couldn't because of the various funding restrictions. Um, there is a funding, local funding gap that they were trying to close, I believe, about a million dollars, um, from a few different local, um, funding sources.
Okay. And if, um, going back to the 2022 report, um, the development cost was estimated at 32 million. This most recent report says they're about still two and a half million shy. So if we commit this money to this project and for some reason it doesn't come to fruition if they can't close their funding gaps, can we repurpose these funds?
Um, if the project for some reason did not move forward, we could, um, repurpose these funds if we haven't received them from HCD yet. Um, so we could re, we could potentially do another amendment to our plan to reallocate them. Or the way that we have phrased it in the, um, draft plan is we didn't identify a specific project. So if this project, for whatever reason, didn't move forward, which it looks like it will, um, council could determine to allocate it to a different affordable housing project.
I, I think just to clarify too, council member, well, there's a $2 million funding gap. There's some additional matching funds from the state they've been indicating they're going to receive. And when you add that on to the $300,000 contribution, the potential for this 200,000 in the county matching that, there's really only another $300,000 gap. for this $200,000 in the county matching that, there's really only another $300,000 gap.
How much equity does the developer have in this? Like, if they're coming to ask for yet another round of funding, is this $207,000 critical to getting this development to actually happen? Or is this simply looking to maximize cash on cash returns by getting publicly subsidized leverage?
I'm going to turn that question over to Shellen, who is online to help answer questions. If you could join us, please.
Perfect, thank you. Hi, Shellen.
Hi, thank you for having me, and thanks for the question. You know, we don't really look at equity on cash on cash. That's more of a market rate way of looking at it, but we are maximizing our, let's see how to put this, currently, the $2 million gap that we expect to have after a tax credit award tomorrow would put us in an infeasible situation if we don't attain additional sources of funds, including the LGMG, which staff mentioned, as well as the RHA funds, which have been committed pending LGMG, as well as town funds, and as well as county, and we have some other requests out there. So that's about, that would be a, you know, currently, we have a zero developer fee, essentially, basically less than 10% developer fee, and therefore, it is just not a feasible project to do. If we get this $2 million gap, we would have a $2 million developer fee, which is still substantially lower than, very much lower than a market rate project, and arguably lower than what investors and state funding sources like to see on publicly financed deals, but I think we could bring it over the finish line. I don't know if that answers your question in a meaningful way.
Yeah, I think that's a good start. I think I'm going to pause on questions there, and I might have some for deliberation.
Are there any other questions from the other council members? Okay, any public comments? Seeing, let's move into deliberation. And who would like to start it off?
I'm happy to start off. I'm happy to go with staff's recommendation. I appreciate the comments about, you know, utilizing these programs, potentially. We've got an ADU one already in place, using this other one as a pilot program. I think we've previously supported Pacific Crest Commons. We know we have a need for additional housing in our community, and this seems like a good use of this funding. So I support staff's recommendation.
I'll echo that, and just want to say, I think this was very strategically done and really impressive. I appreciate finding a path forward. I do hope that we can see this project move forward, and I'd like to support it.
Echo here.
Yeah, did you have any other comments?
I'm ready to move forward.
I'll just, I will just say, yes, I will generally support this. I don't like setting the precedent that sort of the, like, the town's coffers are open every time a developer wants to retrade a deal. That makes me highly uncomfortable. This developer came in offering one set of deal terms. They then came in and fundamentally changed the terms of those deal, that deal, and now here we are again, being asked for yet more funds. We have the PLHA funding, so perhaps it is a strategic use of those, but I just generally don't like the precedent that we're setting by doing this type of constantly retrading on a deal that we've already made. We do need housing. I think something that I'm excited about related to this specific project, and I just spoke with Supervisor Bullock about it today, is the counties provided wraparound services on site. I think that's really beneficial, and I think both at the town and the county, we have recognized that there have been misses on that in the past. So I think that's what will get me there, but I'm very cautious around the type of precedent we're setting with doing this, with this and potential future developments as well.
And I can support that concern. I think if it was, we were taking this out of the general fund or somewhere else, I would be very hesitant, but these are dollars that we can't use for any of our own projects. It's really slated exactly for this purpose, so that's how I got over it or got passed it, I guess.
And I think you're right, and we can use these dollars for other projects, just to be clear. We could use them for more down payment assistance, so there's always a weighing, but I hear you.
There's actually an AMI requirement on the use of the funds, and I think that's actually the key here, first of all, is there is an AMI requirement, exactly.
At 120% for a lot of the funds, I believe, right?
Not for this portion of the funds.
We have to use a portion for below 60%, so this would help satisfy that requirement.
Yeah, which we're not doing on our own, A, just to be clear, and B, I don't really view it in that same vein because we're not, A, the town's not a developer, and we don't, you know, this first project that we're even trying to develop is proving to be an incredibly complex project over at the High Altitude Fitness Site. So I think, you know, not to barrage our developer with changing the deal terms and this and that, but I believe you all know that it's not super profitable to build projects like this, and so finding creative ways to find funding solutions is kind of part of the course for doing a project like this. And we've learned so many great lessons that it would be a shame to, I just use the, you know, I just disagree with some of the language that you used, I guess, specifically surrounding a project of this sort that is very different from a lot of the other things that we fund. So I just wanted to mention that. Otherwise, I'm in full support and will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-74 and authorize the town manager to submit the application for the five-year plan amendment.
Did you want to say anything further, Councilmember Henderson?
No, I'll just say that this is part of the comments I made for you as when you were mayor. I respect that we can disagree on the dais. It's not personal. So yes, we disagree about this a little bit, but I will still ultimately support this for the reasons that I also said.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're down to 8.6. Update to the town fee schedule. We'll see how long this takes.
For, if anyone happens to be watching, I'm Becky Bukar. I'm Assistant Public Works Director. Just earlier tonight, the council adopted a new snow removal reimbursement policy on consent. This policy requires that we implement a fee to charge to process those requests and to cover the cost of processing those requests. Adoption of fees requires that we adopt, the council adopt a resolution and hold a public hearing. So that's what we're here for tonight. What we're specifically recommending is that we set the snow removal reimbursement revenue review fee at 50% of the road acceptance review fee. There are similar processes, but the snow removal reimbursement is slightly less complicated. And then we're also just suggesting that we rename the other fee to road acceptance review fee instead of revenue neutrality calculation, just to make things more clear. So with that, we are recommending that council holds a public hearing and adopt Resolution 2024-73 approving changes to the townwide fee schedule.
Any questions on my left? Any questions on my right? Okay, I do have a question, and it's sort of just to make sure we have a record supporting the 50%. Do we have a more rational basis for picking this number?
It's an approximation, but, you know, so the cost, the cost of snow removal is roughly 50% of all of road maintenance, so there's a tie there. But it's, the amount of work that we do to do the revenue, sorry, the road acceptance fee calculation, it requires a staff report and site visits. The snow removal reimbursement still requires a fair amount of work to process the application, but it's more of a desk exercise. So it just, there was nothing, there wasn't an actual hours calculation. We can track it. We actually track some of our other codes, but...
But this is intended to reflect the amount of time required to do the work?
To process the application. It's a one-time fee, and then once you get approved, then it's just that one-time fee to get the application reviewed and processed.
I will say, staff thought through the amount of effort that would go into reviewing the application, and this was the best estimate of what we could come up with. If we find that we're not spending as much time or more time, we would update that with the next fee schedule.
So I'm going to interpret that as, and by coincidence, it equates to about 50% of what you spend on a road assessment. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, is there any public comment? Any deliberation? Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2024-73, approving changes to the townwide fee schedule.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, passes unanimously. And now we're on to, I believe, council reports. Who wants to kick it off?
I'll go. We had a VTT board meeting. It was wonderful. You heard all about it. Wonderful holiday, Thanksgiving. Busy time. I'm done.
Okay, let's go down to the other end.
All right, hello. River Revitalization Steering Committee meeting last week with you. Mayor Zabriski talked about the River Health memo from the work from the action team, as well as discussion around the RFI, a variety of topics. I just want to highlight for fellow council members, so we have our River Revitalization Steering Committee. As you guys know, we have action teams as well. The action teams have been incredible from, I'm not on any of them, but the reports and the amount of effort that they've put into it. So just want to acknowledge and thank, like, Lisa Wallace, who we had earlier, she was part of the River Health, that there's been a lot of community members, not just on the steering committee, that have really played into this process. So again, just celebrating the engagement process, I think, has been fantastic. Attended, sat in at the CCC meeting last week. It was talking a lot about housing, housing programs. Lynn gave an update on a lot of our housing programs that you all know about and some of the great work that's being done in the region. The Workforce Housing, Truckee Tahoe Workforce Housing Agency, as well as Housing Hub, also provided some updates, too. Then I also sat in last week at the, after the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association meeting. There was a focus group on Placer County's TART Systems Plan update. So I did want people to be aware, they are working on it, and it doesn't impact any of our transit services, you know, our TART Connect and our service throughout downtown Truckee, but there is a survey available now that talks about regional TART. So I do think that's important for folks if, you know, you use regional TART and you'd like to see more service into Truckee or later hours, that it's an opportunity to take that survey. You can go to engage.placer.ca.gov and find a link to the whole TART Systems Plan update. So this is Placer County looking at the TART Systems Plan moving forward. So again, just if people want to get involved in that, and that's it.
Councilmember Henderson?
Okay, not too many formal events, a lot of informal meetings with different community members, some with those who ran for office this cycle. Again, I think you said it earlier on, but just congratulations to everyone who stepped up to run. Meetings about upcoming priorities at different organizations throughout town and some specific policy and issue-oriented conversations. Lots of holiday events. My favorite was probably the downtown tree lighting. Just thank you to everyone. I know so many people work so hard to put that on into all of our downtown businesses. So just a reminder to shop local this holiday season and always. And then one final item that I'd like to raise, I am interested in revisiting healthcare benefits for council members as a future agendized item, and I'd like to know if any of my fellow council members are interested in having that conversation.
I am very supportive to bring this back into council discussion at a future public meeting, and I have a few ideas about that if we have another council member that's interested in doing so.
Aye.
Okay, great. So I have spent some time working with staff and looking at the options here. It is a bit complicated because there's several things to consider, several options to consider. So we would like to propose doing a short workshop that would allow us to work through some of those details, and then that would give staff the information they need in order to create a staff report to bring forward at a future regularly scheduled council meeting, hopefully in January. And so based on the time schedule of this, because there are some people that have deadlines to elect for coverage in 2025, so we would like to propose that we do a workshop this Thursday at 2:00 p.m. That is when all the necessary staff people are available. This gives staff the required 24 hours posting to do a workshop. And again, this would only be to detail what we are going to ask staff to bring forward to a regularly scheduled council meeting for deliberation of this potential future policy. So I'm available Thursday at 2:00. I'm wondering if there are any other council members that would be willing to join me in this workshop and discuss this potential agenda.
Yeah, so it's not a discussion item right now. There's three votes. Put it on the agenda somewhere.
I'm available Thursday at 2:00.
Excellent. Is there anybody else?
I'm available Thursday at 2:00.
I am not...
For a workshop.
I am not available. I also just am concerned about staff capacity, and while I understand you just mentioned the timeline, I will just voice, I feel like this is better suited for our work plan discussion and not to be asking more of staff during the holidays. I will also just share, I know we're not talking about this, but I can't, I can't make it on Thursday at 2:00, is, we just asked the voters to pass additional funding for our community, so it feels a little odd that we would make an emergency action to be talking about benefits for the five of us up here. And I know everybody up here serves for the right reasons, but that's just something that just seems a little odd to me.
We have three votes for scheduling it. We can't discuss it as a seventh of matter. Thursday doesn't work for me. I guess I share, on timing, I share Councilmember Romak's reservations, so...
So I guess, moving forward, I think I heard that there was three people interested in discussion, and you need three people for quorum, and it sounds like Thursday at 2:00 works for three of you. So we will schedule a workshop for Thursday at 2:00.
Okay, do you have anything further on your council report?
Yes, I do have my council reports. Thank you for asking. I attended the library design development meeting and a Climate Transformation Alliance Governing Partners meeting. We had our kickoff to the subcommittees, and we're still looking for some people to join our membership subcommittee. So if anybody up here or if anybody out there is interested, please reach out to me or see our business council. Our next quarterly meeting will be Friday, January 10th. It is held at the Tahoe Truckee Airport at, from 9:00 to 11:00, and everybody is welcome, so I hope to see you there. And then, lastly, we had a really great biomass task force meeting, lots of exciting project updates, and I actually asked staff to send this around as public comment, which was a summary of three of the five major projects that were accomplished this summer based on Measure T. These were for Martis Peak Road Egress, Sierra Meadows Community Fuel Reduction, and Armstrong Track Hand Thinning. I really encourage everybody to look at the before and after pictures. It's pretty striking. And so just some quick statistics on this, they treated 314 acres at a cost of just over $1 million. $300,000 of that came from Truckee Tahoe Airport, and the rest from Measure T. This directly protected 147 homes and indirectly protected thousands of homes. So it's really exciting to... So it's really exciting to see these types of projects happen, and they have a whole bunch more of these planned next year, the year after, and the year after that. It's, it's one of the best parts of that meeting is to hear about all the projects and the successes. So, thank you.
Councilmember Henderson, did you have anything further to report on?
No, I think I talked about the different informal events, the holiday events. I think that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Attended the Nevada County Transportation Commission meeting back in mid-November. There were some cost of living adjustments and an executive report, but that was pretty much it. There was the Reach Code Committee meeting on 11/19, a Truckee River Basin Watershed Group meeting, and a Truckee River Legacy Foundation meeting on November 20th. I can't remember now what we talked about. The LAFCO on 11/21 approved the Municipal Services Report for all the fire districts in the county, and a highlight of that was plans to coordinate, try to combine, consolidate a number of the fire districts on the west side to improve coverage and their financial positions.
So just on the west side, not anywhere else?
Yes. And then attended two things related to community connectivity and community connection. One was a community support meeting, and the other was a program put on by TTCF on systemic inequities in the community. And that's it. Oh, and then someone mentioned the River, councilmember Romack mentioned a River Revitalization meeting, and what you missed was the River Revitalization Celebration last night.
I did.
Shame. Okay, someday we'll make it up to you. Okay. And that's it for council reports, and I believe that's it for tonight's council meeting. We're adjourning until the next meeting in January. There will be no further meetings this month of the council, except this workshop.
Adjourning to a workshop on Thursday, the 12th at 2:00.
And can I just, because the staff report does, or the staff, the agenda says we're adjourning to December 24th. We are not going to be here on Christmas Eve. Right?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
That meeting cancellation notice will get posted, but we will be posting the meeting notice for Thursday. Just to be clear with the workshop, you won't get a staff report. It'll be a presentation item, so there won't be anything attached to the agenda.